I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
You may be seated. Our next item is public comment. In accordance with the Texas Attorney General's opinion, any public comment that's made on an item that is not on the published final agenda will only be heard by city council. No formal action, discussion, deliberation, or comment will be made by city council. Each person providing public comment will be limited to three minutes. Um, let's see. I have, okay, hold on. All right, Chris Wolf.
Ryan, thank you, everybody. Chris Wolf, resident. Uh, I'm here with an exciting announcement. The firefighters have come together to start a nonprofit organization, the Flugerville Firefighters Foundation. It's dedicated to enhancing community safety, promoting emergency and public safety, and supporting our local firefighters. Through outreach, resources, and advocacy, we aim to strengthen the bond between the heroes and the community that they serve. Uh, this is going to ensure a safer, more resilient Flugerville for everybody. Uh, if you would, please visit our webpage. It's pffirefoundation.org. If you check that out, you can learn more about the foundation. And if you love coffee, uh, on there, you can learn about our exciting, exciting partnership with Kachi Coffee. We have our own blend. You all have to try. It's the Firehouse Blend. It's fantastic. Um, finally, uh, something really important that I want to talk about is on that website, you can sign up for free CPR classes and free Stop the Bleed classes. Uh, this is important education that we offer the first Saturday of the month for free because you never know when you might be the hero that somebody needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. All right, our next item is, I do have two other speakers, but they're associated to two of the items that we'll address shortly. Uh, I have proclamations. Hold on.
They're navigating these wires.
All right. Since the first recorded death in seventeen eighty-six, more than twenty-three thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have been killed in the line of duty. The service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund Thirty-Fifth Candlelight Vigil. The Candlelight Vigil is part of the National Police Week, which will be observed this year from May eleventh through the seventeenth. Therefore, I proclaim May eleventh through the seventeenth as Police Week in the City of Flugerville, and I have members of the Police Department here to accept that proclamation.
Wait, where does people come from? We have four proclamations.
Yes. Five.
Five.
This is one time. This time.
Flood Safety Awareness Week creates an opportunity for residents, businesses, and property owners to prepare for flood and flash flooding conditions. Investing in flood safety awareness and mitigation can reduce fatalities and economic devastation. The City of Flugerville encourages everyone to develop their own flood safety awareness, preparedness, and mitigation plans, and to go to the warncentraltexas.org or to register to receive emergency alerts. I proclaim May the twenty-second through the twenty-fifth as Flood Safety Awareness Week in the City of Flugerville, and Gordon Hawes, our engineer, is here to accept the proclamation. The month of May is nationally recognized as Water Safety Month. The City of Flugerville is home to several great natural bodies of water, including lakes, rivers, and swimming pools. It is essential to recognize the importance of water safety, education, and awareness in preventing accidents, injuries, and death. The Flugerville Parks and Recreation Department offers Learn to Swim classes, excuse me, it's gonna happen.
We have calls.
I'm sorry.
Chris is here for CPR.
This actually happened to me in a wedding. I was officiating right in the middle of the wedding. This happened, I had to leave the altar, and, well, I didn't finish the wedding. The Flugerville Parks and Recreation Department offers Learn to Swim classes, private swim lessons, and encourages safe practices around all bodies of water in the City of Flugerville. I proclaim May as Water Safety Month in the City of Flugerville. Members of the Flugerville Aquatic Team are here to accept the proclamation. Economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. The City of Flugerville commends the Flugerville Community Development Corporation for their hard work and dedication to promoting economic development projects and sustaining economic development activities in the city. I proclaim May the eleventh through the seventeenth as Economic Development Week in the City of Flugerville. We have PC Board President Darrell, Darrell White, and members of the PCDC staff here to accept the proclamation.
Are you saying Caesar's as tall as a soccer player?
I said not that.
And his brain is seven tall.
You're not done yet.
All right. Last but not least, our Public Works team. Public Works infrastructure, facilities, and services are important to the health, safety, and well-being of citizens of Flugerville. These infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals and engineers, managers, and employees at all levels. The year twenty-twenty-five marks the sixty-fifth Annual National Public Works Week. I proclaim May eighteenth through the twenty-fourth as National Public Works Week in the City of Flugerville, and members of the Public Works Department are here to accept this proclamation.
I'm like, can you get a skinny angle?
I got permission to stand in front of the court, but we face west, so it would just be all the evenings would just be in the sun. I'd have to do that.
Oh, okay. Thank you, everybody. So, for F, um, is our presentation regarding the Public Works Department.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name's Robin Mika. I'm the Director of Development Engineering, so I'm going to kick off, um, one of many sort of linear departments that are within Public Works. So I manage the Development Engineering Team. I have four engineers on my team, as well as three construction inspectors. All of these people at some point touch almost every project that comes into the city. Um, they conduct their reviews based on our Unified Development Code, which includes our subdivision ordinance. They also review against our Engineering Design Manual, and all of these policies are in place, and our Transportation Master Plan and all those long-range plans as well. But all of these things in place really help ensure that we have a sustainable and resilient city with infrastructure. And so these four engineers are the ones who are doing all the development application reviews to ensure that and that compliance. And then it leads into my construction, the construction inspectors who actually are doing the inspecting and the actual jobs that are ongoing throughout the city. These are the different application types that we have reviewed this past year. I would say these are all the new applications that we reviewed this year, but as, in terms of like total number of reviews that were conducted, you'd multiply this by four or five based on however many submittals come in. Uh, but as you can see, we did twenty-one public improvement plans, so that's anything from water, streets, wastewater, and drainage reviews, preliminary plans, final plots, site development, that's our commercial and multifamily industrial applications, um, for the actual site itself, includes the structure, parking, and all of that onsite improvements. And then site disturbance, oftentimes that's a tree removal, floodplain analysis if there's, um, a letter of ma, letter of map revision under review. But those are those disturbance permits that are kind of larger in nature. Um, and then right-of-way permits, which is all of the work that you see from franchise utilities, ABNS Encore, AT&amp;T, all of those sorts of activities that take place in the right-of-way. And then fifteen development agreements, that's license agreements, um, utility upsizing agreements, and then those two-twelve agreements, which are those bigger overall subdivision, um, agreements, which would be like your muds and things like that.
That does, uh, site disturbance, you mentioned that as, uh, tree removal and other things. Um, I assume that this number is way down from the, uh, the year when we had the very big winter storm Yuri.
So off, oh, sorry.
There were a lot of those tree removals that were done without permits.
When I say tree removal, I'm, it's, it's not a, residential trees don't have to go through a permitting process unless they're above a certain, like, caliper inch. So those things wouldn't have qualified for an actual permit themselves.
But, uh, I saw some really large trees get removed from people's yards.
If an arborist can prove it's damaged, there's no permit required.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so there's no permit required if you, if your, your, your tree is lost to a storm, you don't have to come down and fill out a form?
Yes, sir, no, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question. Um, I don't know if you're covering it later, but how do you feel as far as like time-wise and serving the development community? Are we, um, you know, getting through these steps in order, you know, from first application until final approval, and do we feel like it's at a good pace?
We have timelines that we have to meet. Um, so every first submittal for most of our applications is three weeks on first review, second, uh, the second and all subsequent reviews is two weeks as well. Uh, right-of-way permits, we turn around much faster than that. And then construction plans, that's a really heavy lift usually, and so that's a thirty-day review on the first submittal only, and then two weeks on all subsequent submittals. So we get through them within our timelines. Um, that's not something that we usually would miss.
Thank you.
Uh, and then to speak to the disturbance permit, um, site plans often automatically accommodate for site disturbance. This would be those exceptions to where they would like to move dirt ahead of their site plan approval. So the Development Engineering Team, um, currently the construction inspectors have about fifty-nine applic, active projects today. Um, they're inspecting all streets, water, wastewater, and drainage improvements. Um, this is anything from a large project, like an active subdivision, like we have LISO and Lakeside Meadows, but it also is those right-of-way permits that they're inspecting, and that's usually just laying eyes on our utilities for potholing and making sure that, um, those strikes don't happen. And then within our department is also our Floodplain Administrator for the city, and so the Floodplain program is, uh, an, it's a very important part of the city because it helps maintain our lower insurance levels for those properties that are located within the floodplain. So part of that is we review any floodplain development applications. We don't allow any new structures to be in floodplain. That's not allowed, but it's those existing ones that already are there based on new studies that have come out. And then Gordon Hawes, our engineering manager, is who conducts all those reviews. He also meets with FEMA and the Water Development Board to ensure compliance. They review all those applications with us, ask questions, and then make sure our ordinance is still, you know, meets all standards.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the last Floodplain map that came out significantly expanded the, the areas of Flugerville that are considered to be floodplain.
Yes, sir.
By about how much? Fifty percent?
I honestly don't know that answer on the percentage, but Atlas fourteen did significantly increase, um, what was in the floodplain.
Okay, thank you.
And then just to make some note of some active development applications, um, we have our Public Works Complex off of Weiss, uh, Downtown East, and then Longhorn Industrial. I'll go ahead and highlight Longhorn Industrial because I heard you all talk about Kenny Fort during the, um, CIP presentation. So the Longhorn Industrial Development is just off of forty-five on the east side of that future extension of Kenny Fort. Um, they are waiting to get their final permits for, from Tech Dot for a donation agreement that's required, and that's the reason that extension doesn't exist just yet. Plans are approved, we've had a pre-con for the three industrial projects that are, are buildings that are on that site, and as soon as that permit is released, that construction will start simultaneous to that, those improvements, because they need the driveway in order for their development to be sealed ultimately anyway. So, since I heard so many questions about that, wanted to highlight that. And then we also have Lakeside Meadows, Meadow Lake Preserve, and then, um, Meadow Lake Preserve is the far east side extension of Flugerville Parkway that you all probably have seen. Um, and then Urbana and Compo Estates and Merchis and Tractor are those properties that are just west of eighteen forty-nine Park, um, and they're both actively under development. I believe the multi-family, or the two-family that's on the Urbana track is pretty well underway, and a lot of those structures are going vertical. And then long-range projects, we have our roadway impact fee study update that's underway. They're in the analysis phase, um, going through the details of the roadway network, and that, that study is required to be done every five years. I anticipate bringing that, um, just with numbers related to the maximum calculation and stuff like that in the fall. And then Engineering Design Manual also well underway. Um, we are going to have some, a survey that's going to go live this summer, and then we'll have our first actual public engagement around August. With that, do y'all have any other questions?
Yeah, I want to, uh, talk just for a second about what you're putting into the roadway, roadway impact fee study. Um, so I know we get a, a lot of complaints either way, but the, the development's not paying for itself, the roadway fee needs to be higher. We get from the, the developers, the roadway fee is too high, so it's, it's impeding development. Um, uh, is part of what you're going through there not just the expense to us of expanding that, but also comparison to equivalent, uh, or similar cities in the area?
A lot of that does get analyzed, so there's two components to that. It comes up with the, the maximum assessable fee that can be assessed per those service units, which vary depending on the use of the property. And then there's the actual rate that gets adopted, um, for those different service areas. Today we have A, B, and C. And so it's, the council who was in place whenever that was adopted did not adopt, for the most part, in those service areas, the max for those different uses. That will be something that will come back for analysis. Um, basically, they will tell, they will pull together the number for what the maximum service, like, for the maximum fee can be, and then that's the negotiation and the conversation with council on how y'all want to set that rate based on the data you have.
And the rate is higher for a commercial or industrial use and lower for residential use, and lo, lower for single family than for multifamily, correct?
Generally, yes.
Okay.
Well, that's, that's going to be based on the service unit calculation that you mentioned. Is this update affecting the service, service unit calculation? Because I hear that, uh, that the information I'm getting from, um, developers is that in particular related to restaurants, uh, that service unit calculation is high, uh, and if that is preventing us from getting restaurants, I'd like to make sure that we, we understand that the service calculation is, is as accurate as possible.
I appreciate that feedback. I don't know an answer, but I will incorporate it. That consultant's here, so he's hearing you as well.
Piggybacking off of that comment, um, what, what, um, study or manual do, where is, um, analyze, or assesses the parking determination of like how many parking spots a business has to have based on their use? I, it's probably not one of these, but I was just wondering.
That's adopted through the Unified Development Code and the zoning ordinance, so parking based on use is, um, in the UDC. Um, I, the UDC will, um, has gone through an analysis phase, and I think parking is probably part of the conversation for the UDC.
Okay, because I've heard those similar complaints about that, and then also some low-use business, um, you know, having a lot of parking spots that's empty, so.
I don't want to jump, okay. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Again, Brandon Precious, Utility Director for the city, uh, the other, another, one of the other departments within Public Works, so, um, so overall utilities were about, were eighty-four total employees, so eighty-four total FTEs. Um, we were, we have the responsible charge of the water and wastewater system, so whether that is operations maintenance, or whether that's the CIP, uh, engineering and design for capital improvements for the water and wastewater system, uh, all of that is within our charge. Uh, so we have a fair number of folks that are obviously in the audience that y'all saw come up that are responsible for the day-to-day operation of water and wastewater twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. Uh, so to start off, we have our Water Operations Group. Uh, this is the group that operates the water treatment plant and the water distribution facilities. Uh, so, uh, big focus of the past year has been focusing on extending that membrane life that we have for our existing membrane system. Uh, as you're all aware, we're undergoing a very large capital improvement project that will replace those, those membranes with a new membrane system and expand the capacity, and our intent is to be able to expand the membrane life of those for as long as we can to be able to make it until next March, uh, March of twenty-twenty-six. Um, we're also integrating more data into our SCADA system, so SCADA stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. Uh, so that is the, essentially the system that controls everything in town and allows us to control everything in town via, you know, computer controls essentially. Um, so we want to start moving, we're moving, integrating more and more data into those to move to what are called district metering areas. Uh, we'll elaborate more on district metering areas in a couple slides. Uh, and we're also making sure that we have extensive training for this new expansion. So, uh, the existing facility is a direct filtration membrane facility, so it's very simple, very, I say simple, it seems simple, but there's a lot of moving parts for this one facility. The expanded facility will have a lot of new structures that a lot of the operators have never seen before, um, so they're going to have a lot of training over the next nine to ten months that they're undergoing in order to make sure that they know how to operate the facility when we bring it online.
Hey, Brandon, on the membrane life.
Yes, sir.
I know, I've been listening to that story for years and years and years. Uh, so has the technology and the science behind the membrane manufacturing improved over the years, or do we still have the same product that we had fifteen years ago? And what's happening with that? Because I know they're very expensive.
They're incredibly expensive. Uh, so for context, I will answer your question the shortest way I can, but, uh, but for context, there's five trains in the existing facility. A train right now for a full membrane life of, right now at our existing facility is about a million dollars. Uh, just for one train, we have five of them. Um, so, those, those membrane, the membrane system that we have in place, they're still being utilized across the globe, so they're not being discontinued at all. Uh, those, the, there are Xenon, y'all heard a lot about Xenon, uh, Suez. Uh, the ones we are going to are a, were a tighter pour, so you can get a higher capacity through them, but we're adding a pretreatment basin ahead of it to be able to get a cleaner product into the membranes to alleviate a lot of the issues that the city's had in the past with agitated clams, uh, zebra mussels, um, to be able to really get as much life out of those new membranes.
So to some degree, it's where we're sourcing the water as well.
And how the original plant was designed, sir, is with it being a direct filtration membrane system, there's nothing ahead of those membranes to stop anything from damaging them or really kind of shortening that lifespan of what those membranes are intended to serve.
A quick question on the, uh, district metering, metering areas, and maybe, maybe it's not what I think it is, but, uh, with the new smart meters, with the systems that we've got in place, uh, have you been able to identify any, um, distribution system loss to date, and, and will that help with distribution system loss?
I have a whole slide on that.
Yeah, I have that question, too.
So I absolutely can talk about, uh, water loss, unaccounted-for water loss, and why district, district metering areas essentially say, I have like a neighborhood, is the easiest way to put it. I know what my AMI data for those smart meters are consuming, and the district metering areas, we're installing more and more flow meters going into those neighborhoods, so I can do essentially a water balance. So I know what's going into the neighborhood, and I know what the consumption is, and I can flag it if there's too large of a delta, which then allows us to, you know, explore the neighborhood, where's our leak, before it's water coming out of the ground, right? So, uh, so that's the intent with, uh, DMAs, uh, but we'll talk about water loss in a few more slides, if that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so Watersmart, the, the AMI portal, um, so twenty-twenty-four, uh, we, we started registration, uh, January, during. So Watersmart, the AMI portal, so 2024, we started registration January 17th, currently sitting at 19%. And January 2017 of 2024, we're currently sitting at 19% enrollment. Surprisingly, it's, you get to a certain hurdle, and then a lot of people don't respond to our emails and they don't want to sign up. And that's, we're going to keep that push to, it's going to be a bit of an annoyance to people to consistently send those messages to sign up, but we really want to push that to be able to push more and more leak alerts to residents, so that way they know there's a leak before they get the water bill, which is a service to them.
Yep.
So overall, since the portal adoption, we've saved about an estimated 2.5 million gallons, just in water loss, that people have found before, before they actually got the bill. And overall, we've got about a 98% positive leak-related feedback. So a lot of them are about, you know, I didn't know there was a leak, I found the leak in the water softener. We get a lot of like positive, positive like messaging as far as being able to identify the leak, find the leak before they got their bill. So we're getting really good feedback from the ones that do sign up, but we just need to push that registration.
Are we offering a enrollment incentive by any chance, like a 10% discount on next bill?
I will, I'm sure, we're happy to talk about doing that.
Maybe we're not. Wave that debit card fee.
No.
Like hug the mayor.
It hasn't, it hasn't been discussed, no sir, to do that. It's a service that we want them to want to have, so, and it provides a benefit to them without us providing an incentive.
So another thing, I don't know if you're going to cover it on a different slide, but how is, do you see an impact on irrigation and like decreasing because people are aware of this is how much it's costing or water conservation?
I think water, there's a few things that push water conservation. There's a little bit that we have about our water conservation program. I wouldn't say that this is the main driver for everybody reducing irrigation. I think the fact that lakes Travis and Buchanan are below 50% full right now probably pushes it a lot more, and LCRAs at very low water levels. But it really helps to push the messaging if someone's on, let's say we're on one day a week watering, which is what we are on right now. We can set alerts if they irrigate on their off day, or their two-day, or two days instead of one. And so a lot of the times the feedback we get from that is, I didn't know my irrigation system did that, right? And that's great for us, and it's an education thing for us to be able to provide residents. So we get a lot of that as far as, they didn't even know the irrigation system was set for the wrong day or two days a week. But as far as pushing, like minimizing demand on irrigation, I think that the ongoing drought probably helps that more than the portal does, if that makes sense. So last year, I mentioned a lot about the Go Aqua Digital Swine that we're working on, which is a little, integrates a little bit with district metering areas. So this integrates our SCADA data, our GIS data, our water model all into one platform. So, so it allows a simulation, if we ever wanted to, to know if employee X shuts a valve, how many people are going to be out of water, what's the pressure going to be like, how many notices do we need to send out? And it gives us that in real time, instead of trying to run this analysis through a third party and having to bring all the data back into a different, different, you know, desktop instead of in the field. So it allows that real-time, real-time flexibility, and also allows the emergency response in the event we have a leak and we need to shut down an area and we need to let people know as soon as possible that they have an issue. So this here kind of gives you a general outline of how, if I can get the, nope, can't get the video to play, but essentially, we have a video of how that actually works in real time, but that essentially allows us to identify and show how those are actually going to be affected if we shut a valve. So our line maintenance group, which is the fieldwork, so a lot of the fieldwork folks, the ones you see in the field, driving around town, repairing the lines, in the hole, dirtiest job probably around. So they're responsible for critical system repairs, preventative maintenance on all our water wastewater lines. They also control pressure regulation across the city, so there's pressure-reducing valves across the city that ensure that no one's having service lines blowing out all over the place. And we also do required monthly dead-end flushing as required by the state. We also have leak correlator pilot that we're pushing out, that we pushed out this year to expand on next year. So when we have those district metering areas set up, and we want to know where the leak is in the neighborhood, and we want to pinpoint it by quadrant, so let's say you have a whole neighborhood, we know there's an imbalance, instead of someone driving around the neighborhood trying to find it, leak correlators sound the pipe, so that way we know exactly what area it's in. So really be able to really fast-track where our leak response is, and it will really push that water loss number down. So water conservation, our water conservation group is responsible for all the PR activities you see. So Liz does a phenomenal job of making us look really phenomenal, because most of the time, no one knows we're out there, and Liz makes it very well-known that we are. So we have a lot of rebates that we're pushing out, a lot of it regarding Flourish and Plora that we're very proud of, which is a zero escaping rebate to be able to really push people to move in existing homes to move towards more zero escaping and less native, or native turf grass that requires irrigation. So that's, we partnered with LCRA, and LCRA also throws extra money on top of our rebate, so then it really is beneficial for all of our water customers as well. So outside of the Flourish and Plora program, we also have a variety of rebate programs, whether it's rainwater harvesting, whether it's irrigation evaluations, the Girl Scout Patch Program, which is from the last slide that you saw Liz in. So anything that we can do to be able to really push water conservation, we are doing as much as possible to really push those rebates out to our water customers, with a lot of that being pushed towards more, more conservation on irrigation as much as we can.
Brandon, how do we do that with HOAs, the zero escaping aspect? Because one of the things is that we can do things moving forward, but being retroactive and trying to apply some of those policies, the HOAs may have specific mandates, requirements that work for that. I mean, do we go to the HOA for themselves? Do we go to an individual consumer? I mean, I know there's constitutional protections to us well regarding what we can or can't do.
So a couple things on the HOA front. So residents we talked to, there is a state requirement that says that HOA can restrict a resident from zero escaping or using drought-tolerant landscaping. So we have talked to a variety of HOAs. So they, we usually, they usually come to us when they find out about the program and go, how do we take advantage as a commercial customer? And, but the residents, they say, my HOA won't allow it, and usually we say, well, if your HOA says no, come to us, we'll come to bat for you and go to your HOA meeting if they say no, it can't happen. Usually when that happens, we never hear back from them, and they fill out their application because they, we will go to bat for them, for any resident if they wants to. On the HOA front, they're a commercial customer. We've had a lot of interest from HOAs, but we don't have a commercial rebate in our existing program, which we're hoping to be able to expand into FY26. But we wanted to test the waters with residential first, and then once more and more commercial customers said we'd love to take advantage, we want to figure out what that cost benefit is, how much water we save compared to how much it's going to cost us to be able to incentivize them enough.
What are the leak detection tablets?
Leak detection tablets are something you would put in your toilet, so they're a dye tablet, comes in a little packet. So most people don't realize your toilet's leaking, it's leaking water into the bowl. You don't, because, you know, it's just constantly filling, and if you're not hearing it, then it can just constantly leak water. So what you do is you put the dye tablet in the tank, it sits in the tank, you don't flush the toilet, just leave it sitting there. And if you notice that the dyes ran into the bowl without you flushing the toilet, that means your water is leaking into the bowl. So you have a flapper valve or something leaking within the tank, and it's an easy fix, easy to identify if you have a leak, because a lot of times people don't realize that there's a leak there. And it's a slow drip adds up over a period of a month. And so, so those, all they do is just give it a visual indicator that there's a leak in the toilet.
Thank you.
So as far as water loss, unaccounted-for water loss, the AWWA benchmark is a 10%. So nationwide, we want to go for a 10%. As of this most recent year, we're at a 3.11% unaccounted-for water. So we're highlighting that because we're very proud of it. We worked significantly hard with our finance and utility billing team, as well as our own internal operations to ensure that we keep our unaccounted-for water loss as low as possible.
What the heck is going on in Cedar Park?
So these are their reported numbers. We got all these numbers from their reported numbers from Texas Water Development Board. So we didn't, these are all what they report to the state, as we're required to do as well. We couldn't tell you what's going on with Cedar Park or anybody like that, or in any of the other cities, we just know what they reported, that's what we're putting up here. So again, we're, we're very proud of our number. We, we want to keep it obviously below that 10% AWWA benchmark, but if we can drive that number below 5% based upon our work with utility billing, with our finance, and with our work with our operation to be able to account for that water loss, the water, it's cheaper to account for the water and be able to get the water in the pipes than to lose that water, right? So as much water we can account for in the pipes, the better off we are.
And I guess the reason why like Cedar Park is just positioned in Austin is because Austin's older, and so consequently, as you said, what happens usually with leakage is because of the pipes and the original pipes that were put in originally, and you having to remediate that. But Cedar Park's a newer community, so when you're looking at close to 20%, I'm like...
It, it also accounts for how you're accounting for the water, right? So it could just be an operational, so we've noticed like operational changes with how we actually measure the water that we're using for flushing or for normal uses that we have, right? So it could be, or how, if it's meters under or over reporting, right? Those kind of things, while the water isn't leaking out of the pipe, you're not metering it, so therefore you're losing the revenue as well, even though it's still going out. So there's a variety of issues that go into that number, not just leaking out of pipes. So wastewater treatment, sorry, I'll be brief on the wastewater treatment side. So our wastewater treatment plant, as y'all are aware, this is a, is the central wastewater treatment facility, that's probably the only one online right now. This is a standard conventional antibacterial nutrient removal process. This past year, we just, just finished up completing the sledge-holding tank effusers. Those were about 40-year-old, 40-years-old from the original plant from the early 80s. So we finished up replacing those to be able to put that sledge-holding tank back into service, as well as updated our de-watering chemical deliveries. So there was a bulk chemical delivery that came to y'all recently that reduced our per gallon cost to about a dollar per, a dollar per gallon. So over a period of a year, we saved significant amount of money on one of our most expensive chemicals. Part of the wastewater side is the industrial pretreatment program, so this includes any type of industries that have a non-domestic wastewater stream. So whether it's, sometimes it's restaurants, sometimes it's industrial metal plating shops, since they have a non-domestic wastewater stream, they pay a surcharge because they have a higher strength wastewater. So we're responsible for sampling these, and we sample them all year and keep adding more and more to the actual database that we have, to be able to make sure that we are tracking these customers as, to meet industry standards as well as to ensure that they're, we're having to charge them based upon what their strength wastewater is. Design Services, we talked about earlier, so you've got, you've got Jeff and his team over there that do the capital improvement projects, so we're responsible for all the project design, plan costs and everything. Plans, cost survey, everything that goes into a utility CIP project, whether it's pipelines, facilities, that's all in our, all in our wheelhouse on the utility side. And then we have the construction management side, which is, once they're out of design, and we go into putting pipe in the ground and building facilities up, we do anything from pipeline, pipeline installations, facility constructions, and pipeline rehabilitation all across the city, no matter what it is. And to give you a little bit, I know we talked about this earlier, but to give you an idea of current projects that are in design are listed here. The four that are highlighted now are the ones that will either be coming to council this, this month, later this month, or will be coming within the next coming months for construction. So we've got a really big push, a lot of projects are coming out of design, which means a lot of projects are going to be going in the ground or hitting construction soon. And as you know, we have our three utility fund capital improvement projects that equate to 500 million of our entire CIP on the utility side, three generational projects to serve a city for many years to come. And I would be remiss to say, my last slide on this is mainly just to talk about, we have a very valued partnership with the folks in Denmark, so they send us no cost to any of us. They send us to Denmark to be able to really see some really amazing technologies, and I think it speaks volumes to our, our team, our group, that they keep inviting us. So we're happy to keep going because they...
Do they come here?
They have come here. And Roger and I did a video when they did come here, and so we were, you know, very humbled for them to come out and be able to see our stuff, and really wanted to look at Flugerville as a whole. But yeah, we were, we're very happy to keep sending people, because they, again, they're paying for it, and we're happy to send them and learn a whole lot about how the EU does water and wastewater. And it really, again, speaks volumes to our team and the amount of effort they put into the projects they have to be able to keep getting that continued advice from the drains. So...
What have you found most valuable about visiting there and seeing what they do?
They, so, so I got to go on the first one last year. So my favorite thing on the water one was, they have a lot of smart technology that they have for their water systems. They, their water's a little different, they're all groundwater, and it's very unique, but I think the most, the interesting thing with, is how they value water. So their residents, their, you know, all across the country really value water, and they know that they pay a pretty good amount of money for that water, and for the, but they understand the value of that water. And so they respond, their, their industry leaders are the ones that are investing in smart water technology to minimize how much water they lose and really get the most bang for their buck, how of smart technologies to really minimize staff input, minimize how much, you know, they have to spend to like water loss, and to really rehabilitate their systems. And their constituents, you know, support that full, you know, full out.
Now you say Denmark operates entirely on groundwater.
Yes, sir.
They, they are surrounded by water.
Yes, sir.
And now, unlike Germany, they don't have a lot of, you know, rivers going through the, the country, but I'm, I'm curious, are they not investing in desalinization? Are they not taking advantage of the Baltic Sea?
They don't need to. So they, so they're a very, it's a very rainy country. They don't irrigate, they don't have large green grass like we do. So a lot of smaller, smaller homes, non-irrigated space because they get so much precipitation. So which, with the precipitation, obviously fills their, their underground aquifers much quicker. So they don't have the need to, you know, desal or anything, because all of it is filled in groundwater aquifers, and because of how much they value the water for domestic use instead of like irrigation for, for green grass like we do over here in the States.
Unlike Texas, they are not a realm, a realm of perpetual drought punctuated by occasional catastrophic floods.
Floods, yes, it's not feast or famine over there, it seems like it's always raining all the time.
It's more like Seattle.
Something like that, yes, sir.
Is Thomas going to go and tell us how much it's like Seattle?
Happy to answer any questions, but Thomas is...
So Brandon, before you leave, let me make this editorial comment, because I'm just totally, I mean, as, as long as I've been on council and been around all the types of services that we provide, the water and wastewater, I know are probably one of the most important, next to roads obviously, but one of the most important infrastructure processes that, that support the growth of Flugerville. I mean, it's just totally, totally amazing, the technology, the equipment, the smart technology now, and the development of the wastewater treatment plant, everything that we have today. Most of everybody here understands it, and most of the council understands it, but I would bet that our average citizen doesn't have a clue.
Yes, sir.
And that's the majority of our citizens. They do have a clue when they get the water bill. I get the large water bill too, and, but the fact that we have to have this awesome, amazing infrastructure to keep our city moving and alive is one of the most critical things that I think we need to understand.
Yes, sir. Bringers of civilization is what we hope to do, and make sure that civilization keeps going. So, thank you, sir.
Well, I don't know how I'm going to follow that up, but I'll get through these next 19 slides on emergency management. So our emergency management director, Joe, could not be here tonight, so I'm going to cover it for him. One of the things that we like to talk about, obviously is the last bullet point when it comes to disaster preparedness and planning, that's the continuity of government. And I think in emergency management, one of the things that has been so fascinating to watch throughout the city and in the community is, you know, emergency management isn't really a department, it really isn't a function, it is a mentality. You really have to have a community that buys into ideas such as continuity of government, kind of always thinking about how we can be more prepared, and it takes a lot of partners and stakeholders to be able to effectively do that. We don't have the largest, you know, every city will tell you budget to be able to spend a lot of resources on emergency management, and so we have to rely on partners both inside and outside of the organization. And I think that that's ultimately kind of the definition of community. There's a lot of planning that goes into that, and that's another area where we rely on our partners, like Travis County, working underneath their emergency operations plan is critically important, and the sharing of resources back and forth so that we don't have unnecessary duplication of services throughout the community. I think that that's another way that we can further highlight that we're, we're working together as good partners. Obviously, we've kind of got a very cyclical nature where we're, we're going through seasons thinking about storms and special events and all of these different categories, but it all kind of falls under this, this bigger, broader perspective. And so obviously, we live in the world of Emergency Operations Center, which you guys are familiar with, and we'll talk about training here in a minute. But fortunately, the type of language that we use as we work cross-platform is very similar, and that comes out of the Incident Command System and all the NIMS training that y'all are familiar with. So it makes communication across those different agencies in emergency situations very fluid.
We all know what we're walking into when we have to stand up in EOC. One of the things that I'm really proud of that we've done over the past year is really increased our ability to host training, not only within the city, um, but within the community. And there's some other things that we're gonna be rolling out later on this fall and in the winter, um, that are gonna expand on that a little bit. Um, but we've had the, uh, the fortune of working with some of our agency partners to bring in experts, um, from, um, ESD to, uh, Travis County, the National Weather Service and partner with them to be able to put on trainings to better help people understand what to expect in emergency situations. It's really about coordinating resources and ensuring that the critical functions of the city are able to continue and we can get resources out to the community in those types of emergencies. Um, so those trainings are critical and I'm really proud of, of what we've been able to do in that regard. This is another slide that talks about continuity of government. We've worked through every department within the city to assist them in coming up with their COO plans. Um, this is critical so that folks that, um, you know, are in the finance department understand their role, um, when, when, uh, we start talking about continuity of operations and being able to, uh, get bills paid when we're trying to procure things in an emergency situation. Special event planning, so we spent an incredible amount of time with the amazing, uh, parks and rec team and the police department, really thinking strategically about how we're gonna stage resources and be able to react, um, in the event of an emergency and what resource allocation is going to look like. And last but not least, um, this, this, uh, part of, of Public Works also acts as the liaison for, uh, the Flugerville Fire Department and allegiance, uh, allegiance, um, for the services that they provide within the community. So there's a lot going on there, I'm happy to answer any questions, um, but if not, I'm gonna move on. Evan.
Thank you, Mayor, Council again, Evan Gershell, Operations Director for Public Works. So we did talk, we, we did talk about traffic transportation engineering as it relates to CIP, but now we're also gonna, we're gonna not only address that division, we're also gonna talk about the other four divisions within public, our Public Works operations. Um, starting with streets and drainage maintenance, this is a picture of our team, with Carlo Franco, who's our operations superintendent and his guys. I'm proud to have him, his, his team does a great job. Um, one of the things that they do is manage our pavement maintenance program, as we discussed earlier, that consists of the preservation and then like smaller milling overlays, sometimes full depth. And this is something that we plan out over a five-year period and that we execute, um, in conjunction with CIP engineering. We have, we do maintain regulatory signage and traffic si, lights, uh, or signals, and that's ten thousand street signs, two thousand stop signs, and here's some just stats to show you. Um, traffic signal maintenance with school zone flashers and traffic signal network infrastructure, advanced traffic signal management system. All that to say is that we, we integrate technology to improve operations. And that picture to the top right is a picture of our Centrax mobility. This is something that we recently have online and now able to fully utilize, this will give us, um, so our traffic signals, whenever there's a default or an interruption, it gives us direct notification of it, so we don't have to wait to hear from dispatch. We can go out there and address it immediately. And so this has greatly reduced the calls that we've been, that we've received for traffic signals. Not only that, we've done things like install battery backup units to all of our traffic signals so that in the event there's a power outage or something like that, we're, we're being provided a push notification of that happening, but the signal doesn't go down because we have a battery backup. So we've really kind of upped our game when it comes to making sure that we have continuity of operation in that regard.
Wha- what systems do you have in place to ensure that new lights go up on schedule?
The new projects or-
New, the, you have a new traffic light. It goes up, supposed to, uh, just be there for a little while, then it's supposed to flash for a little while, then it's supposed to be fully operational. What systems do you have in place to make sure that that operates on schedule?
So that's, that's really more of a, a, um, function of CIP project management. So it is in the proj, the project process of when, when we have tested a light and that we know that we're good to go and it's programmed, we'll put it in flash for about a, a six-day period. Um, we do that just to educate this, educate the public, making sure everybody's aware of it. And then we also get with communications and push out to our residents of when, that when the light will go live. So there's just a protocol, best practice that we use in project management when it comes to that, to put it in flash for a certain period of time to make sure the public is aware. And then whenever we're reviewing specifications for the traffic signals that are being put up, we do spec out our, um, our Centrax mobility and, and also the, uh, what's it called? The traffic signal operation, like the box, the brains of the traffic signal.
Okay, so, uh, I, I wanna make sure I understand this, the process, so, um, the light gets installed, CIP is responsible for making sure that the light gets installed or does that go through your department?
That, that is typically a CIP project management function, it's budgeted in the CIP.
Okay, and then they hand it off to you and they say, okay, this light is installed, it's ready for you to test?
No, that would be, that would be, that'd be the contractor that we have a contract with for the construction.
Okay.
Um, we, operations and CIP have to work hand in hand to make sure that we all know what's happening. Uh, but as far as like getting the, getting the signal up and functional, that is a CIP project management practice.
Okay, so the, the contractor is the one that's responsible for turning it on?
Yes.
And then you run it for about a week and then it, it, it goes completely operational after that?
Yes.
And you, you, you do some, uh, direct contact to, to people in the vicinity? How does that work?
Yeah, we, we work with communications to make sure we're pushing out notification. We also have signage, uh, along the roadway that also in, informs the public.
It'll say that there's a new light that's coming up, it'll be operational in two weeks, that kind of thing?
Yes.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Um, again, like I just mentioned, we have to work, operations and engineering have to work hand in hand, even when it comes to project planning, like if we're doing, say, preventive maintenance as far as like a mineral bond signal like we discussed earlier, are we planning to do milling, milling overlay in a certain area, operations is, we need to make sure that we're communicating with, um, engineering to make sure we don't step on each other's toes, basically making sure we're getting the most efficient operation. Drainage maintenance, and that is another, another item that we take care of. This is just a picture of why it's important. Um, as you can see, it's top right, um, if you let things get overgrown, it can reroute the pathway of drainage. So making sure you're maintaining these drainage ways makes, it, it ensures that the conveyance of the flow is, is proper, so you don't cause erosion. Street sweeping is another, a lot of people don't think of street sweeping as being a drainage function, but as we think about what ends up in the street, it ends up in our creeks. And so now that we have the new street sweeper, that we're operating in, in-house or the city's operating it, um, we're able to ensure quality and timely time of operation.
I have a question about the maintenance and erosion control and like the detention areas of all the different neighborhoods. So you just handled the city storm drainage lines, what about working with, um, neighborhoods or, or other, or developers that own the drainage? Do you a, address erosion control issues there?
We do, if we, if we do notice that, we do work with them to make sure it's repaired or maintained properly.
Thank you.
Recycle Center, as y'all know, uh, we have our recycle center, this is just approximate totals of what we accumulate every year. So, as you can see, this kind of highlights the different things that are accepted there. Fleet Services, um, is led by Chris Parker, who's the Fleet Manager, but Anna Marianovich is the Fleet Facilities Manager. She and her team are doing a great job. Four technicians in total, approximately three hundred vehicles that they all maintain, that goes from oil changes to normal maintenance, we do in-house state inspection, that would maintain all of the city's equipment. Fabrication, fabrication, tire repair replacement.
Do you have a, a software that keeps track of, like, how often each equipment is serviced?
We do, and actually, we have our integr, now we've started new technology where we have QR codes in the vehicles and have started up a maintenance plan where we do like daily checks for now. Um, employees can just scan it and do their vehicle check and if there's an issue, uh, that they indicate on, on their phone, it'll automatically create a record order. Um, so we can stay, I'll stay on track better with that, so.
Thank you.
Facility maintenance, uh, there is, uh, again, Anna and her team and, um, we have about seven folks there, that includes janitorial, um, maintenance technicians, we have about fourteen city facilities that we maintain and clean, keep clean, about a hundred and sixty thousand square feet. Um, we're also integrating technology when it comes to buildings, um, with building automation and, uh, that's where you can control HVAC and also monitor electrical systems remotely. Um, and then-
And the, the building automation also lets us, uh, track and control locks for the buildings as well?
Not locks, no. The system that we have is expandable, meaning that we can add different things to it, such as like moisture detection in server rooms, which is very important, which is something that we, we're gonna be looking at. Um, but we don't have locks as a part of it. It's something that could probably be looked at, though, and we can. So building assessment, life cycle modeling, we kind of talked about that earlier. Um, life cycle modeling, what we've done is we, as, as I discussed, as we do with roadways, every three to four years, we go through and look at overall condition index of the road, you do that with buildings too. So roads will provide the OCI, or the PCI, pavement condition index score, but they do the same with buildings, a facility, um, condition assessment, provide scores and it also leads to, uh, maintenance programming, um, so you can keep track of your assets and your costs better. We also participate in incident response, um, as Thomas mentioned, when it comes to Emergency Operation Center, our activation, it is these streets and drainage guys that are in, in there doing the work. Um, so that ranges from floods, vehicle accidents, assisting PD, and we even hang Christmas trees and Christmas ornaments. Traffic transportation, as we mentioned, we implement transportation drainage capital projects, um, heavy with project management and planning, as you all would, would assume, with executing projects on time, interpreting and ending and updating codes and standards, and we also assess and address traffic, safety, um, and citizen concerns that are brought to us. Also, design services, um, so professional services procurement for design studies, um, project design, public input, we hold open houses to get feedback from the public on, as we're designing projects. And then ob, obviously, technical review codes and standards. Whenever we review projects, um, we will get our engineering specification, make sure it matches, meets or exceeds. And then a component of traffic transportation engineering is construction management inspection. So as utilities has this, and so does traffic transportation. And master planning, I just will speak about this tonight. Drainage master plan, which we kind of went through a little bit earlier, the five-year CFP. Get a picture of some roadwork. If there's no questions for me, I'll hand it to, um, Abby.
How close are we to finish with Kelly Lane?
Kelly Lane two?
Yes.
August.
August.
Yeah, late, late July, early August.
Alright. That's-
Drive.
That's good to hear.
Alright, good evening, Abby Morrison, Public Works Services Director. So Public Works Services is a department that's made up of three divisions that carry a significant workload, uh, behind the scenes to ensure that Public Works keeps moving. Uh, we, so we have administration, real estate and capital services. Administration, uh, of course, provides internal and external support, they provide a critical role if there is a weather event, these people may not be out in the trenches with the team clearing stuff, but they're in the office, making sure that we're taken care of, taking that citizen request in response, and they also are very involved in any citizen, community engagement that we have. Uh, our capital services team, the CIP book that you heard earlier today, that is part of their function to help gather that information and review it. With that, they coordinate and, um, maintain contracts, they help with the procurement side of things. Uh, this chart here is just to show the amount of work that we have, not only ongoing, but future. Um, one other thing that we have is the CIP dashboard for all of our current and future projects. We keep that up to, the most up to date as we can, so that's flugervilletx.gov backslash projects. Um, so anything that you see in the CIP would reflect on this dashboard, you can see if it's current or future in the status. Uh, last but not least, we have our real estate team. Uh, this team is responsible for acquiring all of the city's right-of-way for capital needs or any other projects that the city may have. This team in particular, um, has a, a really tough job, I think. We have a fair market value, we have to make sure that we are fostering that relationship with our residents, we have a budget and schedule time restraint, and so this, this piece is really important when it comes to delivering projects, is when we need the infrastructure in the ground, we have to buy that right-of-way for people to, uh, for us to be able to get that infrastructure down in the ground. Just currently, we have twenty-three projects from the CIP that are currently actively in the acquisition process. Um, that has three hundred and sixty-four parcels, so that's a lot of times different property owners, people that we are dealing with trying to acquire some type of easement, right-of-entry, something like that. Uh, since fiscal year twenty-five started, we've closed out five projects, including Colorado Sand Drive, um, East Flugerville Parkway, and we are so close on the raw water line to getting, um, our last easement done for that. Uh, typically, we have about a six-month acquisition time, um, this can always go longer if we are still in negotiations with the property owner, um, but that is our typical timeline in what we do, uh, and that is our question, that's, that's all I got.
I have a, a question on the other slide about the process, the length. Um, how often are, are projects, um, delayed because of, um, not reaching a, a settlement? Does it happen frequently or rarely? Somewhere in between?
Um, it is happening, happening less frequently now that we have a real estate team, so the real estate team, the division was really just created maybe a year ago, maybe a year and a half. And so having the, this team focus just on the right-of-way acquisition has really helped moving the projects along and helping the lag of, you know, follow-ups and coming to the table and, and have, working with our legal team to be able to move forward. Um, so I think it's happening less now.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I was gonna give you credit for not just speaking, but monitoring all of us to see, anticipating your questions, 'cause I saw you pause when you saw me about to, um, open my mouth, but I wanted to wait till the end. Because, eh, one of the things about, could you go back to the slide where you said where the projects are located, flugerville.com? Um, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a way to im, embed that on our, on our homepage? Because I will tell you, i- it's one of those questions we get all the time.
Mm-hmm.
And it'd be nice to be able to just have something highlighted, hey, listen, if you have questions about what's going on, here you go right there.
Perfect, yes, we will work on that.
I bet that, is, is that just our projects and are you, so is it-
That's in the C, that's in the CFP.
Yeah, so, are you, 'cause I get a lot of questions about whatever construction and whoever it may be.
We also have a website for that.
Yeah, no, I, I know.
Yeah.
I just, maybe it's very difficult for them to find because I always have to help them find it.
Well, we've, we've got slash projects and we've got slash maps and-
Yeah.
And I think, we used to have slash bonds and I think bonds turned into projects, if I'm not mistaken. Um, so I think even then, the projects still show up on the maps page as well, this is just giving us more detail and more of a narrative on the, uh, on the projects, right?
Yeah, it's, yes, I'm not as familiar with the maps page, but this is for capital projects in particular, so it doesn't have development projects that are ongoing, it focuses solely on our, our CIP projects.
Which is, which is excellent, because we already, I mean, people ask about developments in general, but we already have a website for that, but something that's quick and easy, embedded, you see it, highlight, boom, click on it.
Well, the, the search function has really improved dramatically in the last year. Roger and his team have done a, an excellent job of updating the website and the, the ability to get stuff from the front page, uh, there, if you have any kind of question, is really, uh, pretty impressive. Uh, a lot more impressive than it was when that website first went up.
You assume people wanna search as opposed to just-
I have another suggestion on that, is that, because I know that citizens, when they talk to and ask questions of city council members, want that magical answer right away. They don't wanna go to a website, they don't wanna go look for stuff, okay? They want the answer.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe a little QR code that we can give somebody here and takes them directly to the website, and maybe we already have that, I don't know.
We do not, but, uh, that is something that we were talking about, actually at the last P&amp;Z meeting, we mentioned something about that, so I think that's a great idea and something that we're definitely going to work on.
Because I think that the citizen's gonna say, well, okay, so my council member's gonna go off and find out, he was a lot of good, she was a lot of good, I'm not gonna ask her again.
Mm-hmm.
So I think if we can give them something credible, they'll say, wow, okay, great, this sounds good. And I would like to invite Brandon to my next social connectivity- okay, great, this sounds good. And I would like to invite Brandon to my next social connectivity margarita meet to talk about utilities, but with a Ms. Rachel presentation. Check out Ms. Rachel.
I'm just laughing about what's going on.
I know.
It's good. Thank you.
All right.
All right, anything else?
Thank you to everyone. That was very comprehensive. It's a very
It was. Good job, good job. All right. Now we come to our most favorite part.
Isn't that, isn't that?
Reading of the consent agenda. Oh, wait a minute. Trista's not ready.
Where's Jim? He, he, if he's there, he can pull some things. We're not pulling anything. Rudy, are you pulling anything?
Nope, no one's pulling anything.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez. On our consent agenda tonight, we have 5A, approving an ordinance on second reading, an ordinance of the City of Flugerville, Texas, amending ordinance number 1203-15-22-24 of the City of Flugerville, Texas, as amended by approving a specific use permit for lounge use within the downtown district overlay located at 701 West Pacoan Street, to be known as East Pacoan cigars 2025 specific permit, providing cumulative and repealer clause, providing for a non-severability clause, and providing an effective date. 5B, approving an ordinance on second reading with the caption reading an ordinance of the City of Flugerville, Texas, amending ordinance number 1203-15-22-24 of the City of Flugerville, Texas, as amended by rezoning an approximate 2.509 acres of land, being all of lots 1A and 1B, block A replat of Lot 1. Flugerville Industrial Park A subdivision recorded in document number 2025-00014. Official public records, Travis County, Texas, currently located at 18801 West Lane, Weiss Lane, from General Business 2 to General Business 1, to be known as the Weiss Retail Center rezoning, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. All remaining items will be acted upon in a single motion.
Move to approve.
Take it.
No take backs.
Okay. Thank you. Motion carried. All right. Moving on to public hearings and ordinances. Item 6A is conduct a public hearing and consider approving on first reading an ordinance of the City of Flugerville, Texas, amending Title 15 Land Uses, Chapter 153 of the Code of Ordinances and of the City of Flugerville, Texas, by amending the Aspire Flugerville 2040 Comprehensive Plan adopted by the Ordinance Number 1545-22-04-26, to incorporate the Flugerville Forward Master Plan Mobility Plan, the Master Mobility Plan, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight, we're here to talk about the Flugerville Forward Mobility Master Plan. This is a combined update of our transportation master plan as well as our trails, master plans. Basically, we've taken both of those updates, put them into one document, looking at more of a holistic approach on how we move through our community with a big focus on connectivity and making sure that there's a safe and effective means of, of traveling through our, our town. Also, making sure that our infrastructure and our master planning is looking at future-proofing. And so that in the future, we're set up in the way that we need to as we continue to grow out into the ETJ. So you may recall that we've been working on this for about a year or so now. We've, we had Kim Lee Horn as being our, our contractor, and they've been working with us on, on doing that and designing it. Tonight, we have Kelly Reese and Jeff Whitaker with Kim Lee Horn to be able to go through, walk through on the, the plan itself and answer any questions. This is public hearing because this is a, an extension of our master plan, of our comprehensive plan. So I would look forward to moving forward with this plan and then going into our updates later. So with that, I move over to Kelly and, yeah.
Sounds good. Hi, like Jeremy's dad, my name is Kelly Reese. I'm here with Jeff Whitaker from Kim Lee Horn, and we're the consultant that helped with the Mobility Master Plan. Y'all should have a copy of it on the desk in front of you. And this is, we're calling it essentially 99% draft, pending your comments and anything else that comes up. But going to go over today, what is the MMP? Y'all have seen a version of this before. Going to go over what's in this draft MMP, kind of go over a lot of the elements that went into it, including public input, the roadway plan, which is one of the core pieces, the trail plan and cross-sections, and then talk about what's next from here. Starting with the Mobility Plan and what is it? How did we get here? About five years ago, we were here presenting the Flugerville Forward Transportation Master Plan. That document at the time was very similar, except it focused really on the roadways, because at the time, the goal of document was to develop a CIP program for the roadway system. And so it had a bunch of good information about the roads, but not as much about pedestrians, bikes, trails. Since then, the Aspire 2040 Comprehensive Plan was published. That has a lot of visioning for what we want Flugerville to look like as we progress through the future, and that has a lot of important elements, especially one for 10-minute cities, or sorry, 10-minute neighborhoods, which is integrating a lot of land uses and walkability in ways that people can move around within a neighborhood 10 minutes from their home. In 2023, there's the Parks, Rec, and Open Space Master Plan, which was published, that had the Trails Master Plan in it. Trails are a form of mobility, and they were at this point in their own separate plan. And so this plan is trying to do is integrate the transportation elements from each of these items into one central document, the roads, the trails, the active mobility, and all of the elements of the 10-minute neighborhoods. There's a vision developed for this plan that was actually done by an 11-member advisory committee that was made up of Flugerville residents. That I'll get into a little bit later. But the vision for the plan is the Mobility Master Plan strives to create a sustainable network for multiple transportation options that enhance safety, connectivity, and resiliency for the Flugerville community and its visitors. This vision is supplemented by six goals. That can be summed up as safety, being a well-connected system, being an effective system, assist in the office travel options, has regional partnership, and then has a good communication system, somewhere we were just talking about with the CIP website. And a lot of these goals tie into the strategic plan goals currently adopted for the city. Each of the strategic plan goals tie in in some form or fashion to at least one of the MMP goals, which is another piece that we really want to make sure this aligned with Flugerville's vision. Getting into the Mobility Master Plan itself, you do have it in front of you. There's a total of eight chapters. There's one goes, that goes over, sorry, existing conditions and what we're at today, one that goes over all the public engagement that we did, one for the roadway plan, one for the Active Mobility and Trails Plan, a section that focuses on the 10-minute neighborhood concept, and then getting into some of the meat of where do we go from here, the funding for projects, some framework that we want to put in place as projects move forward, and then concluding thoughts. Getting into some of the bigger sections, one of them is public engagement. We had several recurring groups that we met with. I just mentioned, we had that 11-member advisory committee that was made up of members selected by council at the time. And so these are folks that live in the Flugerville community, community and contributed actively to the plan at six different opportunities throughout, where we brought them maps and brought them activities, and they gave a lot of feedback. And there's also a lot of recurring input from staff, planning department, development engineering, public works, parks and rec, to really help us get the plan to be what Flugerville needs it to be. We also went out into the public multiple times. We had an online website that included both a mapping system and a survey. We promoted this through lots of pop-up events out in the community. We were at Deutschenfest, we were at a pub crawl last year, we were at Public Safety Day. We also gave each of the advisory committee members about 200 of the business cards that you see on screen to hand out to the community that takes you to the website, so that people could interact with the survey and the map. Ended up getting a lot of engagement there that we used to carry through the rest of the plan. Some of the feed, or some of the themes from that feedback, the biggest categories that we saw people were interested in were roadway improvements, intersection issues, and pedestrian safety. And between these topics have made up more than 50% of all the feedback. We also talked with Travis County a lot about right-of-way coordination within the ETJ. Some of what we were trying to do with the roadway plan clashed with what their existing blueprint was, and so tried to coordinate some of that. Similarly, with TechStop, there's a lot of TechStop facilities within Flugerville, Pacoan Street, 685, and so talking with them about how those roads would be classified. And some of the biggest takeaways were people were really concerned at intersections, but they loved the trail system. And so we tried to bolster both of those, tried to have lots of recommendations for intersections, and then also keep the trail system as good as it is today. We were also at P&amp;Z just last week, and so since then, there are actually a couple of updates in the plan that you have in front of you that we integrated. The two big ones that we integrated from that point was we talked about some of the intersection control evaluation that's in the plan, and how we're selecting the appropriate intersection types as we develop and redevelop intersections. And then also information about mid-block crossings specifically for schools, as kids are trying to cross roads and get to schools, how do we make sure that they have a safe treatment? P&amp;Z brought up a lot of items that we're going to be sure to integrate as Flugerville updates its engineering design manual and the UDC, that are items not really meant to be specified in here, but we have notes to focus on lighting, landscaping, traffic calming, and trail amenities based on what we talked to P&amp;Z about. Moving on to the roadway plan, first kind of going over what are the roadway classifications in town, or not in town, but kind of the standard is you have arterials, collectors, and locals that have different levels of mobility versus access. Your arterials, for example, this is right where we are. You've got Flugerville Parkway and 685. These are your spine of your network. These have not necessarily as many driveways, but you have high speed and you can move through a area quickly. Collectors are kind of what connects those arterials to your local roads, and so they're kind of the veins of the network. They have kind of a blend of mobility and access. And then your local roads make up everything else. This is often where your homes are. This is often where retail is off of. It's kind of set back into a retail area, and it has lots of driveways, not quite as much speed. Using that, this is what the roadway plan looks like currently for the Mobility Master Plan. I'll get into a little bit of how this compares to what we have today, but you'll see the red is your arterials, getting down to the blues and yellows are your collectors, and then the local are shown as the white with the buffer around them. You'll notice that there's a couple of pink arterials that we talked about at length, and ended up not coming to a conclusion at the time that the plan was being put together of what they should look like. 685 has its own corridor study and design going on right now that has gone back and forth a couple of times, and we didn't want to lock in that design based on something you put in this document. So we've looked it up to that project to figure out what that corridor will look like. And then Flugerville Parkway and Pacoan Street are both in the Travis County ETJ, and it's going to take a lot of coordination with them to figure out what we want the cross-section to look like. And so they're called out as special corridors until that time. I have thumbs up on the screen for a couple areas. We got specific feedback from the community of things that they were looking to see, and so we were able to integrate those into the plan. And so going over what changed, the grid on the east side, the kind of dashed orange lines is much denser than it was before. Previously, they were spaced at about once every mile, once every two miles, and now they're now spaced about once every half-mile. That really helps get a better grid so that people have options of how to get in and out. If you get stuck on one road, you can dart over to another road. We've also separated bike and possessioning facilities throughout the, throughout each of the arterial, sorry, throughout each of the roadway types, which you'll see in a lot of the cross-sections coming up. There's about 199, nearly 200 new travel lane miles throughout. A lot of these are brand-new facilities. Some of them are new lanes on existing facilities, widens like Kelly Lane. There's more major collectors on the east side. The original TMP had a lot of minor collectors, which just don't really have the capacity to move cars the way that we need to for planning out here, especially since Flugerville doesn't have full control over the ETJ. We're really trying to get the roads that are on the ground to have the capacity that we need. And so they're bumped up to major collectors. It does have more right-of-way acquisition, a lot of it because of the new roadways, about nearly 600 acres more of right-of-way acquisition, almost all of it in the ETJ. Identified some critical connections. If you look on the map, they're little short purple segments. You'll see a lot of them kind of up toward the north, north of SH45. These are existing roadways that have stub outs that with a couple hundred feet, we can connect the stub to an existing roadway, and with really low hanging fruit, good bang for your buck, make more connections through neighborhoods, or sorry, neighborhoods and general areas. And then finally, we reduced the arterial type. It used to be there's a major and a minor. It's common for cities to have major and minor collectors, and major and minor arterials. We've reduced them all down to just one arterial type that has four lanes. That's the main reason that there are these special corridor areas that are not decided in this plan, is because Travis County especially has plans for six lanes in the ETJ, and we're trying to move it with, forward with four lanes. A lot of this is because the grid has densified on the east side. We don't need as many lanes per road. It's more roads with fewer lanes each, which is better for pedestrians to cross, and just creates a better grid network rather than concentrating all your lanes in one area, which is like what you have with 685 today. And so trying to move forward with that one arterial type. One of the, a lot of the focuses we're looking at, one of them is route options. You'll see two neighborhood types. One of them is up near Blackhawk, and it's one neighborhood, one output to Kennamere. If anything happens there, if there's a queue, if there's construction, if there's any sort of accident, all of the people in that neighborhood don't have another option to get out versus down below, there's downtown, there's all sorts of grid access. This is what we're talking about on the east side, where if something goes wrong at an intersection, if there's a queue, if there's an accident, there's all sorts of other options people have to get in and out. And so we're trying to move more toward the grid system to give people options. Similarly, I want to
Are you talking about neighborhoods, so no cul-de-sacs?
Um, talking about kind of citywide, there is a push to get, to reduce the number of cul-de-sacs, but less specifically about neighborhoods and more of like what you see on the east side, just the actual gridification of the network in general.
The major streets and not necessarily the?
It's for both.
People like to live on cul-de-sacs. It's a premium.
I live on a cul-de-sac.
I mean, that's, that's why developers build developments with cul-de-sacs. They're easier to sell than houses on a grid.
Yeah. There's nothing in the plan that prohibits cul-de-sacs. There is a push in the plan to look at the UDC and limit the number of cul-de-sacs, not eliminate, but just move more toward this grid system. But nothing specifically in the MMP prohibits them currently. We do want to look at mode options, making sure that no matter the type of mode people want to use, they have a way to get around. A lot of the feedback was that people would like to use a bike if there are safe ways to use bikes. And so, for example, we want to kind of build out the bike network so people can use that. If people want to walk, if they want to roller skate, if they want to take their car, if they want to use vetro ride instead of using a car, finding ways that we can integrate all ways people want to get around. And then also various types of views, whether it's a commercial corridor, whether it's a kind of residential or a green corridor, having all types of ways that people can experience the network. The next piece that we had was the trails plan, very similar to arterial collector and local. You have spine, loop, and arm. The spine is similar to your arterial. It's your big backbone of the network. The loop is sort of the veins of the network, and then your arm is the little bits that connect the final pieces. Looking at that, this is the trails plan that we're, that we have in the Mobility Master Plan. We've reclassified a lot of the trails from what's currently classified in the system to better align with kind of the spine network and have several trails identified, especially in the ETJ. The current plan did not have any identified in the ETJ. You'll notice a lot of them, especially the spines, are following the routes of roadways. We had a lot of debate over what counts as a trail. Is a charity's path a trail? If it follows a road, is it a trail? And what we came away with is that there's essentially two classifications of trails. There's ones in road right-of-way and ones outside of road right-of-way. If it's in the road right-of-way, it does have to be at least 10-foot wide. And so that's what we have some of the trail system in the ETJ, just because it's where we have the most control to make sure that there are trails out there. But there's also some creeks. There's an electrical easement that sort of has an awkward straight line across the bottom, trying to take advantage of a lot of places that we think might have land that could be turned into trails. There's also a lot of connection points to the neighboring jurisdictions. We actually had a call with each of these jurisdictions to make sure that we could tie in with their trails. You'll see up to the north, Hutto just adopted their new trails plan, and so some of our trails that we're proposing are new to tie into that. Round Rock has a lot in the northeast side that we're making sure we align with, or at least plan to align with, and then somewhere with Austin to the south.
I have a question on the, the ones that are not existing. It looks like even on the west side, most of these are all, all aligned with roads.
Many, the, all the spines are currently. There's some blue, it might be showing up poorly with resolution, that are following the creek beds.
Okay, maybe I was just looking at the, the one I saw is a road. So what about trails within some of these larger parcels, parcels within the limits that are off the right-of-way?
You're, so, I might not be answering your question, but we did
Well, I mean, it's many, so they, so they either follow a road or a creek right now. So, and that's all we anticipate.
So a lot of the city is already so developed that it's tough to punch brand-new trails through. We did look at all of the PUDs that were under review at the time that we did do this plan and tried to figure out things that were kind of locked in stone, because they'd been approved, or things that are currently under review that we could maybe try and snake something through. And for the most part, we found that the areas that we were able to fit trails were the creeks and the road network. There is one in the plan, as an example, in the downtown area. There's an alleyway that connects, where's it, Old Downtown Park? Old Town Park to Flugerville Park. And so we took advantage of that alley to try and create a new trail connection. And so that was one of the, we actually recommend kind of trying to find innovative spots to make mini trails in those types of right-of-way. But for the overall trail plan, it is mostly the creeks and the roads.
The, the other place we would be able to make connections would be like utility easements. Do we have any overhead lines where, where we can put some trails in on a, on a shared easement with utilities?
We do, and I believe we captured many of those. Like on the east side, there's LCRA power line that are going through there. We've found locations there. I think that's on the east end, that light blue color. We've found locations there, I think that's on the east end, that light blue color.
Okay.
But yes.
Other than roads, creeks, and easements, it's not really a good way to connect, make connections.
And, well, that's what I was going to ask my question on, is that, so, taking that knowledge from the west side, what have you been able to leverage to be, if there is any maneuverability, to be more innovative on the east side regarding that?
Some of the trickiness is you really need them to connect across, and development's coming in so sporadically that if we make one dedicate quarter-mile of trail, you have to wait for the next one to come in 10 years later for the trail to continue.
Which is what's been happening.
And so that's why we focused more on things that had a continuous path that we can continue to point at and define. I think there's definitely options to have developments do more of that. It just is so much harder to control that we didn't focus on it here.
So, when there are new subdivisions that are going in, because some on the west side is within the subdivision, and they are adjacent or connecting to, you know, to another development, are we requiring connections to existing trails in the surrounding area where they build, or, I guess, issues?
So, some of the, yes, yes, is generally the answer. So, an example is that Cameron Road. Carmel came through and they built, they constructed a trail segment, went east-west from Weiss Lane, eastward towards 1849 Park. As the other subdivisions come in, we continue that extension, and so they're continuing to build within that space until we will connect to 1849 Park. Along the lines of the spines and the loops and the arms, having these roads, having those trail systems on the road, is that spine piece, so that's really your, kind of your arterial, or your main way of going through, then the loops help to pull in the rest of that. So if there happens to be a trail, opportunities, say through a floodplain or something like that, we're able to connect that, but then a person could utilize that entire space, whether it goes onto the street, goes up to another street, and then comes through the creek system as a loop, so that you're not having to just, you know, go to the next street necessarily. But that's where those contacts are.
And you'll notice there's no arms in the ETJ, and the intent is arms will be developed, and it'll be some of that, like, hey, you're right up against this trail, and so you're going to build the arm that connects from your development to the trail. And it's just hard for us to predict where they are, which is why we left this more alone.
So, is it then all new roads are going to require a 10-foot sidewalk?
All new arterials are. And so, these are all along arterials.
And that's been pretty standard, I mean, what you've done across the city in general. Highland Park is a little frustrating to navigate, and I'm glad it's that way everywhere else.
Well, there's trails now. Thank you. Yeah. I think here as well, we had a couple thumbs up from the community of areas that they're explicitly excited to see trails, and we were able to add them in.
Could you just go over that north one where-
That is up north of, kind of near the row lane area. We got some requests for more walkability, and so trails are up in that area now. Thank you. Going over what changed, there's a fuller grid on the east side, especially there used to be nothing on the east side, and especially because they're following the grid of the roadway network, there is more of a grid of trails out there. Like I mentioned, we had considerations for trails that are inside of right-of-way and outside of right-of-way, which kind of ties into permitted users. We were looking a lot at, currently, the trail system doesn't allow any sort of electric vehicle, electric bike sort of thing, and so we were trying to figure out, does that one to stay? Currently, the MMP does not recommend a change, but it has planned around a future condition where we change to allow trails within right-of-way to have those vehicles, kind of designing to future-proof for it, but not necessarily make the recommendation to change right now.
So, I want to understand what you're talking about when you're talking about electric vehicles. Are you talking about powered scooters? Are you talking about powered bicycles?
Currently, none of them are-
Are you talking about like four-wheel off-road kind of-
Golf cart. So, currently, none of them are allowed in the system.
I was like, golf carts are all over.
Technically, none of them are supposed to be in the system now. This is planning for what do we allow in the system? There were a lot of talks about even just electric bikes, and then of course, the conversation about golf carts, and currently, it's put to bed a little bit in this, and no recommendations are necessarily made, but we did talk a lot about where would they be allowed, and it's really the inside the right-of-way trail system that we said, if in the future we decide to change the ordinance, this is where we'd start, first start to focus them.
So, it's an opportunity for us to, as she said, future-proof. So, it gives us the ability that, should council decide that you want to pursue additional options like that, and look at other ordinances and evaluate that further, we have the cross-sections established, and we have the area set aside that it could accommodate for things like that.
Well, it seems, if we are serious about making the trail not just recreational, but multimodal transportation, we really need to look at some kind of limited powered two-wheeled transportation. Yeah, I do see a real problem with golf carts because they're going to take up the whole space, but, you know, a scooter that's, you know, human-powered versus a scooter that's electric-powered doesn't take up a lot different space.
And you want the golf carts on the road?
I don't know that golf carts-
I want the golf carts on the golf course.
Well, and when we talk about this intermodal transportation, we're talking about golf carts getting around the neighborhood. I don't think the golf carts are moving from one neighborhood to the other. I don't think the golf carts are going from one marginal-
It depends on how adjacent and how much you-
It does. But when we're talking about adjacency, we're not talking about them being on a trail for a long distance, that we're not talking about them being on a road for a long distance. When we're talking about long-distance travel, I think we're talking about the individual, you know, single-user devices, the scooters and the bicycles. I don't think we've got any tandem bicycles that we're really worried about, but I think that's well-appropriate on the trails.
What do you think, what do you think's long, what do you consider a long distance?
Out of the neighborhood, other than to cross the street?
More than a while?
Yeah.
Like, I would say, I would say generally, if you're going from your neighborhood across the street to, you know, to Stone Hill, or across the street to HEB, but you're crossing the street, you're not going, necessarily going along the street. I think that's appropriate. Not to mention the, yeah, but then we also get into the legal regulations around golf carts and having to be registered and have seat belts and all that stuff that a lot of people don't pay attention to.
Well, as I say, because right now, that is, it's definitely happening, or you'll see people down Weiss Lane, even off-roading a little bit in Kelly Lane, you know, on their golf carts.
And I don't want to go back to pre-COVID with the scooters.
Yeah, that's true.
So, sort of along those lines, I'm going to skip ahead a little bit. Here's a good example of what you can see. We do have bike lanes along a lot of the cross-sections that are separate from what we're considering in the trail system to really, this is where you can use your electric bike, this is where maybe one day-
Has the community been asking for bike lanes specifically?
The community has been asking for safe ways to bike. They haven't used the word "bike lane," but they want to be able to bike around cars.
The trails are watching.
Yeah. That's, yeah.
I've been saying that for years, the cyclists I know, they don't want bike lanes.
Yeah, I was about to say, I have not, that's-
Chris Riley is the only one who wants bike lanes.
They're more, yeah, bike lanes are more dangerous than riding with traffic.
So, part of this, let me get on then, does not have as much stuff on it. You'll see the bike areas have been moved behind the curb in every one of the cross-sections, and so bikes are always separated by the, from cars by at least the curb line and then some amount of buffer.
Yeah, I remember you showing this.
So, what gets me with this, and this is my one frustration with the plan as it's presented, and I think I brought this up during our work session, but maybe I was outvoted.
There's no vote.
I don't believe that the, maybe I miscounted how's that. I don't believe the symmetrical nature of these cross-sections is appropriate or responsible. Having the bike lanes on both sides, having the large trails on both sides, doesn't seem like it's what, it doesn't seem to have a purpose. I don't know if that's part of the, you know, future-proofing that we've been talking about, but I see it as, when we define this as our cross-section, this is going to dramatically increase the fiscal impact of constructing those roads, and it looks like a lot of unutilized pavement, which is going to increase our, you know, our local pavement temperature issues.
Was it one side?
Well, I think, I think-
He did.
Call it a sidewalk on one side and a trail on the other, call it a bike lane on one side, because I don't, I mean, that bike lane, people are going to be going both directions on both sides if we do this. It's not like we've actually got directionality on those bike lanes. So, yeah, I think a bike lane on one side, and I think a trail on one side, and a sidewalk on the other for connectivity for those arms that you mentioned, that's what makes sense to me. And I think that's also what makes sense from, you know, but when we, when we go to bid these out, and we start seeing the price tag of building all that pavement, this is going to be a lot.
And I think I said, because I remember maybe six months ago, whenever we went over this, I don't mind having that conversation when we actually, it comes to reality and we actually go to bidding on that, but-
Once we put this in, it goes to bid like this.
Because what I, because what I see, my personal opinion, people just, they just adapt. It's for some reason, if they see people going this one way, they're going to go the other. That's just something that naturally I see whenever I see people, we're talking about bikes, right, that I see people do. I like this, I like, you know, the symmetry on it. I also understand, just you said, okay, well then, how much of these roads going to cost moving forward if we're doing like that?
And how much does it add to the cost?
I'd say this, you know, part of it, again, is that we're talking to our community, we're trying to, for better lack of term, upscale what it looks like, have it be a place where people just, oh, boy, you got an opinion. Not only, not only where you, not only where you live for a couple of years, raise your family, but you stay, and I think that, that's a vibrancy that comes with it. But I'd be interested to hear, obviously you have an opinion on, so, go ahead.
I was just going to address the cost. One of the things that-
I'm sorry, could you introduce yourself?
Jeff Whitaker with Kimmel Horn. One of the things about the costs, we did look at the costs last time, and if you can imagine right now, the current cross-sections below, that's what you built today, the bikes were on-street, built at full paper, and the current cross-section in the-
We don't, we might include a wider lane, but we don't include on-street bike lanes in our current cross-section.
They're actually in our current, they're in the current cross-sections in the master plan, correct? The one on the bottom is the current adopted plan.
They shouldn't have been. I don't remember approving that.
Well-
The only road we have with a bike lane is Grand Avenue Parkway, that's because it was built by Travis County.
Right.
There was never supposed to be a bike lane in a, I think we went to wider-
We can ignore that the bike lanes are on there, the width is the same, so we have narrowed the width of the road and moved the width off the road.
Wait, 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 okay, okay, right. I don't want to gloss over what he just said, so let's, let's, let's not, let's move quickly from that, because that is something that we've had long conversations about regarding bike lanes, and so I'd be surprised to see that. If that's the case, please show us, let us know that, you know.
But if you're saying we're going from a 12-foot lane to a 10-foot lane-
I think we all approve of putting them on the other side of the carbon gutter. I think what Doug is talking about is reducing the width of this road by about 25%, and the hope is by making it asymmetrical and reducing the total road, that we're going to reduce the cost of building this by 15 or 20%.
And that's what he's trying to address.
I'm trying to address that.
And the cost of right-of-way.
So, the, all the lanes are 11 feet or 12 feet, and there's no 10-foot lanes that we put on this, but the current minor collector was 34 feet wide or so. It may not have been striped with bike lanes, but it's wide enough to accommodate squeezing the bike lanes, so we've narrowed the pavement down to accommodate two lanes and put the bikes on the outside to prevent to have the full asphalt depth. So when we do the cost estimate, it's roughly the same as both the cross-sections cost.
And that's good to know. That's where I was going with the point. We're talking about a narrower pavement area. That's what Doug is proposing.
I'm just comparing from today to the new one.
Right. So, we're talking about taking this, and instead of having it at the width that it's having, that you've got it, making it asymmetrical cutoff, what's on the right-hand side there, then what we have in terms of a cost difference? Do we have anything? Because it seems like at the very least, we're buying less right-of-way.
But what he's saying, he's saying, what he's conveying, though, is that that's not the case, and he's the smear here, like, that's what, that's what he's saying.
Well, that's compared to what the current cross-sections adopted were to today. Now, if you're looking at the proposed ones and doing it and build less pavement, then it would-
Yeah, that's what I'm talking, if, we're not talking about the one on the bottom and the one on the top, we're talking about the one on the top modified compared to the one on the top. So, does that save us money? It sounds like it should.
And does it provide, does it provide substantially the same utility?
Yeah, I think one of the, one of the ideals of buying future-proof, I'm going to switch cross-sections, this one over to this one, because this is the more common one. There's not many minor collectors in the city, there's more major collectors in the city, so I just want to, this is the more common one. So what we're trying to do is future-proof it, so the ideal behind the separated facilities is if you had the separated facilities, you could in the future potentially have higher speeds separated from slower speeds, so it's separated those, so rather than having, you know, 10-foot area, that was the thought behind it.
No, I absolutely agree with separating the bikes from the traffic.
Yeah, we could absolutely.
But I don't understand why it needs to be symmetrical.
Yeah, we could have gone with a trail on one side, if that's the desire.
I think a trail on one side, a sidewalk on the other. We don't need the super-wide trails on both sides. We, I feel like I'm getting too deep into this, so I'm obviously not the designer here, I just-
That's what I was going to say, is, they do this, I mean, it makes sense to me, and I'm not lost on what either you or David are saying, but, and so, do you, hey, you do this for a living. Do you see a substantial, would there be a substantial reduction in the actual price point on this?
If you take out payment, the price would be reduction by whatever payment you take that out.
Yeah, like, were you talking about like, like 25%, you know, 25%?
It wouldn't be that much.
No, I mean, it could be 5%.
I think we did like, roughly 12%, I think when we looked at that answer question.
Because there'd be, there'd be less right-of-way and less-
So, you said about 12%?
We would not probably change the right-of-way requirement, but there would be less payment.
So, did you hear what he said?
What, if you're, if we're not taking the land that's on the right-hand side, why is there not a reduction in the right-of-way?
We generally do right-of-way in 10-foot increments to future-proof essentially, and so we'd be taking back less than 10 feet.
So, you would still have to get that anyway.
Wait, I'm looking at the right-hand side, I'm seeing a 6-foot sidewalk and a 7-foot bike lane. If we're not taking that, that's, we can take 10 feet less.
Well, you'd have to have the sidewalk on the other side. You would want a sidewalk to the other side, so you would take-
So then that would be 10 feet exactly.
Is mandatory to have a sidewalk on both sides of the street?
I would highly encourage you to have sidewalk.
I think we would still want a sidewalk, it just might not be a 6- or 8-foot trail.
One of the reasons we're thinking about proof-proofing is that also when a turn line comes in to serve a development with that extra right-of-way, that right-of-way is there, rather than, they could obviously dedicate it at the time, but we were thinking about also having the right-of-way, one of the most precious commodities you can get, because most of the collectors are going to be built as development comes in, as they dedicate the right-of-way, and you only get one shot at right-of-way, and so 80 feet of right-of-way is a very common collector with the right-of-way that's been explored across the nation. It's 70 feet today.
So, David, I'm going to quote, I'm going to quote our Williamson County Commissioner, Cynthia Long, on this specifically. If she had to do it all over again, she would have gotten all the right-of-way she'd have gotten 15 years ago, because you get, you're going, as they said, you're going to go out there and get that right-of-way, and so that's why it's not going to be as diminutive, or it's not going to be as substantial of a cost savings under your assessment on that as well. And you're right, because for future-proofing purposes, you don't know what's going to happen with that, and that's significant in that.
What data, I'm going to switch lanes on that. What data suggests that we need more bike lanes in the future?
Thank you, that was my question.
Because I don't believe that's true. That's just my opinion, and it's an uneducated opinion, but it's based on what I see in
That's just my opinion, and it's an uneducated opinion, but it's based on what I see in around and Austin and everything else. I mean, why are we going to go out there and spend all this money on a half a dozen people that are gonna utilize this per year?
Cause we watch back to the future too, and we need to make sure we have our boards ready to go.
Yeah, maybe so, but they could use a sidewalk. All they can do, they, they just can't go over water.
If, if I might just attempt an answer at that, I think when we look at like the current master plan cross-section, right, we might not stripe the lanes for bikes today, but is, we have the pavement and right-of-way for it. And that was kind of the idea, that we were continuing to hear, we need more options for my, for bikes and other modes of transportation, right? And so it gives us the flexibility in that, in our current transportation plan to stripe those if they were there. And so while you might not see them, there's that extra space. And in the future, should we have more bicyclists and things like that, we have the option to do it. I think this transition kind of speaks to that same, that same argument that what we heard through public engagement is that we might not have a whole lot of bicyclists or bicyc users now to the future-proofing point, that having a cross-section like this that provides that flexibility, maybe, you know, those, those bike lanes or additional trails for electric bikes don't get done on both sides when we first do it. But acquiring that right-of-way gives us that flexibility, because long-term, we are seeing increased needs for other modes of transportation. That's a lot of what we're hearing from.
And I agree with that 100%, everything you're saying. My concern is what Doug was saying a while ago is that once, or you, Doug and Rudy is, once we approve this, it's going out for construction.
This is what we use for our bid docs.
And so I don't see any, any data that shows that, hey, we're just gonna have it there, but we'll have it ready for in the future. My, my, I suspect that whatever, whenever we bid out for it, they're gonna put those lanes in there.
That's gonna be our, you know, engineer's back in talks.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and to be clear, I am supportive of, uh, acquiring the right-of-way width.
Right.
I'm, I, I am supportive of a bicycle, uh, roadway functionality for, for bicycles. I'm frustrated by the, the symmetricality of.
I'm frustrated about. It's frustrating.
Well, I don't, I don't, there's not, I don't.
I think I have a bike lane on one side, I have a trail on one side, I have a, I have probably a skinnier sidewalk on the opposite side.
I got it, I got it.
Yeah, well, but hold on.
I'd probably take out.
But based on what, what I'm hearing now, is that we're just allocating that for right-of-way, and we're not gonna do that just yet.
You, you could, well, and similar to what we do today is a sidewalk on one side, a wider trail on the other.
Right, or no?
Can you answer that?
When, when we ask a consultant to design, you know, our next roadway, they're gonna design it based on what we've said we want. This is the, this is our chance to get to say what we want, right?
Like, yeah, that's what I'm saying, do we get a chance to veto that?
I'm not talking to an engineer before they go out for design and saying, hey, you only do half of that.
Does the plan require it?
Sure.
Right, so this, the, these, this would be our goal. If, if it was next year and say Thomas's team was going out for a road and we weren't seeing the high demand for bikes at that time, might be that here's the right-of-way, but we're just constructing the main lanes and a trail on one side at that point in time. But the right-of-way is available in the future to add those later if that demand isn't needed.
There's a key question, because you just said that if we're not seeing the high demand, what is the catalyst for you to see the high demand that would actually effectuate you enforcing that?
Riding their bikes on the road.
Yeah, you, you start to see that in certain, in certain corridors. You, you would see that, it's like, um, on Weiss, you know, we'll see triathlons and things like that. There's certain areas, Grand Avenue, that's why it had been striped at one point in time. I think establishing a wider right-of-way and the flexibility within that allows for that opportunity in the future.
So the plan would require it, it would require the, the, the width, but not that exact design?
But if you put the picture in, that's what people are gonna expect.
When we send out an RFP for.
When we put out the RFP, we put it exact.
We would articulate specifically what we would want.
Did you hear what she said?
But, but the direction you would have to articulate is what we state in this plan.
It's a good point.
Yeah.
Right, conversations could come up on corridors as well.
Doug, if I, I can ask, is the purpose of eliminating one of those, is it based on cost or aesthetics?
I think it, I think it's the symmetricality. Um, no, so, no, no, it's, it's, uh, the cost, but also the utility.
Okay.
Because I don't believe we need bike lanes going both directions. I think we're gonna have one bike lane and they're gonna ride both directions. I think we're going to end up with a whole lot of pavement and no one using it. And that's not the message I wanna send to our community.
Well, but that's why we have. If you have the right-of-way, you can, you can pivot in the future, but if you say this now, then everything is gonna look.
I just don't see bike riders riding different directions next to each other.
But how many bike riders do we have?
No, they, they pass me as a.
Unless they're forced to.
No, I see it at Mueller, when I go down there, I mean, they do it all the time.
Every, every trail I've been on, I, I was walking around.
We're saying, we're saying a trail though, as opposed to a road.
Well, no, but we're, we're not talking about the road, we're talking about the off-road bike area.
Yeah, the bike area.
The, the bike lane, it's not on, on pavement, not on the, the main lanes.
Alright, so is there any way this would come back to us for an approval before? If we approved, if we approved the width?
It's theoretically possible, but if we get it wrong tonight, we'll get it right tomorrow.
Well, we could also leave.
What did she say?
I'm just gonna throw it out there, we could also leave the right-of-way, remove one of those high-speed lanes from one side. And at, at some point in the future, the right-of-way is there, but the, the picture or the image that moves forward is, is maintained where only one is on one side and you still, you don't have the symmetricality, but you've left the flexibility in the future. The image then would be correct long-term as we're, we're planning for that.
Well, I think you'd need to leave in the flexibility, and, I mean, you could just make this blank and just have a road.
What we've done in other communities is we have behind-the curve options, in that it shows one with like this, one with a shared-use path and one with a sidewalk, and the designer has the ability to use the same width, and he can pick which one goes with the master plan. So we could identify as like, so it's not as transparent that there's a menu of options that they can do. I think the road by my house is exactly what you described, there's a 10-foot.
Well, you said transparent, I'd say as much as it mandates that. And, and so if you're able to, if you're able to articulate a vision that allows for the flexibility in there, and that's, and that's the standard and not the specific group, I mean, cause, I mean, I'm, I'm doing y'all a favor, I'm counting the votes. You know?
You don't know.
Then I think that's probably, I think that's probably a better way to handle it.
So when I go by Merkison in the morning to, to work, I look in the back, and there must be 50 bikes back there, so don't tell me people don't ride bikes, they do.
Oh, yeah, they ride them.
Junior high school students ride bicycles.
My middle school students all the time. High school kids do, and especially now that bikes are.
Not that many.
Not too many in high school.
Once you can, once you can drive.
No, I would say, I disagree, because I would say that the motorized bikes are the bikes that I see, the, the non-bike bikes.
And it wa, it was feedback we heard, even on the, the strategic plan from our youth advisory council was about the ability to get places on their bike. Um, and so I, I do think it is a trend that we'll continue to see. Um, we can certainly take that note with the first reading tonight and have that, um, updated for the second reading, which comes back to you at your next meeting.
Thank you, Emily.
Now, so is this the vision just for collectors and what about arterials?
The overall vision is the same in all of the, or not all, but the type of vision is the same. The locals are pretty much unchanged from today, but the collectors and the, um, arterials have the same kind of vision for the separated bike and, um, pedestrian facilities.
So this will be 685 in front of the new City Hall in Monarch?
Yes.
I don't know that we've got that much right-of-way right now.
685 is a special corridor.
Yeah, 685.
This is for new roads, right?
685 doesn't have that much.
They think, think Flugerville Parkway extension.
Well, remember, we made the decision on 685 that we were gonna.
Try to buy.
Yeah.
This could be any, any of the, any of the roadways, Fugerville Parkway or any of the arterial streets.
The new parts of it.
Yep.
So, but we're saying that you're, so you're gonna revise the, all of these ones according to the feedback, to give flexibility.
So new, new roads that would be coming in, how utilize this? So anything that had an existing design in place was not.
Well, anything that we're reconstructing, anything we're expanding.
There would be something that we would be looking at.
I mean.
Flexible option on the end.
Granted, we're taking Schultz to, uh, to MAD 3 or whatever it's called, right? So that's based on design.
Right, and I think that the plan also talked about context-sensitive design. So based on what that area is, depends on what, which topic we go for. So like the collector had an urban type.
Now, do we want, do we want to be symmetrical on an arterial? Of course, yes.
I, I think it's unnecessary.
The, the one thing that we'd wanna make sure, and, and it's been articulated already, but is, is to think of this from a long-term standpoint, right? Thinking of how, how does the, the other community to the south, how have they approached things? And what are, are the situations that they're in right now, and what are they doing? And so what we're looking at is opportunities to set ourselves up in the future to be able to make sure that we're not having to go back and do all of the retrofits.
Which is a, which is a great point, and, but, and it sounds like what we're saying is that you're going to buy the right-of-way and allow for the width, so we have that electricity to go and go for that.
With, with like that.
So that, that's.
It's, it's the, it's the discussion right now basically on the bikes. But the bike facilities is also that other facility that could accommodate for a two-wheel motorized vehicle that's not necessarily in conflict with somebody that's walking or rolling in a, in a wheelchair or a kid on a big wheel who's beyond a sidewalk and, and the other scooter or whatever it is might be riding on the, on the bike lane. This would give a designated facility for those opportunities and without requiring you to go across the street to go get onto that lane, right? So you touched about like with the, the schools, you know, being able, being able to ensure that the kids are able to, to move back and forth on their side of the street.
Well, I think we can be strategic on which side of the street gets a bike lane. I, I really don't think we need it on both sides.
And we, we've also.
And those, and those shared-use paths, as it says here, is, you know, uh, also available for bicycles.
I agree, yeah.
Now, I.
They are, and, and that's what you see today on Fugerville Parkway is you see a, a 10-foot wide shared-use path. But, but that's also just, this is that additional opportunity for potential infrastructure.
And to be clear, I personally, I'm okay with, with one of these bike lanes, but I don't think we need it on both sides.
I think, I think part of, one of our presentations, I talked about something that we said years ago.
Based on environment, yeah.
Weiss Lane.
Based on where the schools are.
Was going to be our example of what we want our roadways to look like moving forward. It was the reason why we got into a very heated debate when, um, a certain electrical company said they had to get their wooden poles out there, and it still took a year and a half later for them to do it, and no one was gonna have electricity, but I'd add grass. But we said that that was gonna be a standard for that. And, um, I, I was just listening to, um, what Melody was saying is true. And, and are we doing that, you know, with the thought process with these? That, hey, this is the modell, this is what we want this to look like moving forward or bold ones? And I like the idea of having flexibility for that. I'm, I mean, I, we're a team, so if we're hearing concerns about bike lanes and everything else that I made before, I'm more willing to hear about, listen to that. But I just wanna be able to make sure we have that modality, that mindset, and, and check when we're talking about what these roadways look like moving forward. Now, we also had a discussion, as you pointed out, west versus east, that we just don't have as much control over the east, what we, what we'd like to see done and everything else over there as well. So that's taking into consideration that even if we had these grand ideas of what we want designed, will our partners, I mean, I mean, that's a good question to ask y'all, our partners with the county, are they going to help supplement and make sure that whatever our vision is, looks like this? Or are they gonna say, this is a great idea, we'll give you baseline and you just figure out what you want from there?
So in the plan, there is, there is conversation about, when we had conversations with them, looking at their cross-sections, how our cross-sections worked, and then creating the opportunity of, um, or the design of how do we blend and where are there opportunities there? They, they, today Travis County has on-street bike lanes. That would be something that would be coming there. So what we would be saying is, can we utilize the same, um, cross-section, the same right-of-way width? In lieu of putting it on-street, could we look at doing it off-street? I think that's one of those compromise pieces that we have, that we've, we have identified these were the areas that we would be putting those bikes in, and so we're coming.
When you proposed that, what did they say?
I think that they're, they're amenable to having conversations, we, we just need to work with them.
The city has, I believe, a monthly coordination with Travis County, and so it's come up. Um, it hasn't had a specific, like, what are we doing here? And so it's all theory until we actually have to put it in the ground.
Tell them to start with Cameron.
What's, um, what is the cost differential between their plan of how they have the bike lane and this plan?
What we've seen when we compared is that having the bike lanes off-street is cheaper, because you don't have as much subgrade that has to go underneath it. And so almost all of our cross-sections, except for the arterial, is cheaper in the new plan than the old plan.
Okay.
Yeah, it's right, wait.
I had, um, I had a question about, or I don't know if we still wanna, we're talking about this.
I've said enough.
Okay, well, I had a question about all these roads in the ETJ. And who has the responsibility of building them? Cause we're saying this is the design we want, and this is where we're thinking it's going. So is that all of the city is going to be constructing those roads? Or is the county, or like you were talking about working with, or developers? Who's, who's responsible for this cost?
Are you throwing softballs?
I just wanna confirm, just, cause that's a lot of roads.
Those are road, like typically that's stuff that comes in as development occurs. And so if we have things shown on side of our roadway plans and on our trails plans, which is included in here, and when we have those conversations, we say, we anticipated a roadway to be here, that needs to come with your development. Same thing with the trail system. If we don't show those, then we don't, we don't have that opportunity to ask for that road. We can say it would be a great idea, but it doesn't mean that it's required.
So this is a starting point for the negotiation?
And this is, this is one of those reasons for ensuring that we have the connectivity in the ETJ is by showing those multiple, you know, the additions on those collectors, so we can get that connection.
And, and we've gotta make that clear, I, I was being a little facetious with Councilmember Ryan on that, but like, Councilmember Louise, uh, pointed out, it's true, like Seal Road from Weiss is, to 973 is, is scheduled to be built by 2038 by the county. And, I mean, it's already Jerry Springer right now. Anytime you're dropping kids off over there, when you're trying to get the neighborhood, you're going from there as well. Um, it, I mean, we know, we know what's been on the bond packages, that's worked there as well. And so the frustration is that they're not going to go to the county, they're coming to us. They complain to us about these things and, and say, what are we doing? How are we pushing these things and these items on here as well? So, I mean, I, I love the map, love the idea, I don't like, um, the lack of commitment on working with us regarding this, um, our, our bike lanes, or whatever you wanna call them. You know, with us on that, but, um, we need to be more aggressive out there, at least pushing them on there, because we just, all the growth, I mean, we just have so many neighborhoods down there now, it's unbelievable.
And then, uh, another question I had, and you may or may not have the math on it, but you had alluded on the, on your, uh, screens, you had alluded to the changes from the old, you know, the current plan to this one. Um, and how much extra acres and whatnot? And I was just wondering if there was like, um, you had a magnitude of the cost differential between what this was and what this new plan is adding?
I do not currently have that number, I think because a lot of it was anticipated to be put on development, and so it would not be from the city, um, but we don't have the numbers at this time.
I mean, obviously that's, that would be a concern for the developers as well, if they're going to be required to, to make a more expensive road.
Yeah, but they're also the same developers who deliver us crappy roads that we have to fix and to get blamed for.
I'm just saying it's a consideration, you know?
We can always reject roads that don't come up to standard. Sometimes, been there, done that. Alright, where are we now?
Um, I think the last piece on this is we did eliminate the six-lane arterial except for potentially where it, um, interfaces with 685 or the ETJ.
And what is the reason for that?
Um, the thought is it's more pedestrian-friendly to cross. You have fewer lanes that you have to get across. It also currently, um, it just spreads out your network. Currently you have, um, think of 685, wherever anyone tries to go north-south is along one corridor. Um, it's tough to change what's in the city, but if you had more options, then rather than congesting more people onto that, and they're trying to cross driveways, and they're trying to cross intersections, and the intersections keep gobbing up, and if you spread it across more road, it's the same number of lanes in the city spread across more roads rather than concentrated on singular roads.
So more smaller roads than the large ones?
Yes.
So, but thank you for pointing out that it was the same number of lanes.
Yeah.
I, I, I like that. More options of getting home and not being stuck in traffic.
Yes.
And with the right-of-way being the same, it still opens up the opportunities so that when a turn lane may be needed, or when we, we start to see growth go in and, and we do need to expand, we have those, that ability to do it. If it turned into a situation where we needed, on one of the other cross-sections, where we needed to expand and, and do additional turn lane or something like that, that might be a location where the bike lane went away. And, and to Kelly's point too, trying to cross a six-lane roadway, what was brought to our attention is that sometimes when you come to an intersection, there's additional turn lanes there. So it's six lanes, but then you have turn lanes, so now it's nine lanes. And you're trying to send people across, it could be a kid, it could be just a pedestrian, and it becomes very challenging to try and feel comfortable to be able to cross that. And so if we're trying to get it, at being a more walkable community, this is the way to do that.
Thank you.
Um, overall, a lot of this is what changed, we talked about the bike lanes, which we will revise. Um, trees are now set back from the roadway and all of our cross. Trees are now set back from the roadway and all of our cross-sections, so they're not right up against the curb. We do have a minimum for 11-foot through lanes. The old plan did have 10-foot lanes. Some of it was to squeeze ride-of-way in, and so we made them all at least 11-foot, so it feels more comfortable driving. The major collective ride-of-way did go up. A lot of that is for future proofing, so that you can put in turn lanes, you're not already so squeezed that there's no room for that type of improvement. The urban cross-section that we have, that, there's no official urban cross-section built today, but sort of that downtown east kind of feel of cross-section, downtown east is its own beast, but the urban cross-section no longer has a center turn lane. We did take the bike facilities behind curb, which is both cheaper and safer, and then have that one arterial type. For what's next, we are planning to be back to y'all in two weeks for a second reading, and then at some point either then or whenever adopt this plan. But we've been through y'all, P&amp;Z, and the Parks and Rec Commission for a work session and initial draft. Parks and Rec and P&amp;Z have both looked at this and pushed it y'all's way, and so at this point, it is just us wrapping up with y'all.
Is this public? Is it a public?
Okay, this is a public hearing. We do have a individual that wishes to speak.
Logan Ott? Are you a cyclist, Logan?
Yeah.
Hey, he's taking one lane. Better than zero.
Hello. So, yeah, I am a cyclist. I'd like to be able to get around a little bit better, but I have comments more than just that. So on page 54, it says that the bikes kind of transition into the roadway. You can look at it. If that does have to happen, it'd be great that that be physically protected, because bikes and cars, you know, they don't mix very well. On page 60, it says, driver inattention and failure to control speed. Driver shouldn't feel comfortable to not pay attention and feel comfortable to speed. I think that that can be worked into the design of the road, rather than just relying on like a police enforcement signage. Let's see, on page 70, the origins and destination map only really shows destinations. Adding like a housing density overlay, maybe a job density overlay could give a better picture of trip generation. Page 87, the high-visibility crosswalk-
Oh, okay.
Is barely visible in the image.
I'm sorry, what's barely in the?
On page 87.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are there two pages on?
What's the name of the?
Page 89.
Okay.
The high-visibility crosswalk is hardly visible, so probably find a better example for that. Sorry about the pages, must be reading a different version. About the cul-de-sacs, I do agree, it makes nice neighborhoods. I've lived in them, and it's a nice low-traffic area where kids can play. For transportation, like in Hidden Lake, if you open up the end of that cul-de-sac with like a shared-use path or something, that allows mobility still. That's really cool in my neighborhood. I use that kind of method a lot to get around. On pages 110 to 112, wherever that is for you guys, it lists environmental impacts for trails and intersections, but not roadway projects. Feel like trails are a less environmental concern than roadways would be, considering that they're much smaller. Sorry, I don't know what page this is for you guys, but page 117, it says sidewalks are capped at six feet in non-residential zones. I don't really see a need for a cap, just as long as there's a sidewalk. Maybe a minimum would be better. And then-
What page?
I said page 117, so around there somewhere.
119. 119.
Add two, non-residential sidewalks must be six feet wide.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And I guess I'll wrap up. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Having a bike lane on both sides of the road, you can kind of think of it as, like, why would you build a one-way road? You know, having it on both sides can add to the network instead of, you know, having to cross the road, and that's kind, it's more of a dangerous move instead of just continuing straight on. That's pretty good at future-proofing if you have it on both sides already. And then that adds to the network, and as you make a network bigger, you know, the demand comes with it, you know, induced demand, like that.
So you're saying if we build it, they will come?
Yeah, basically.
That's what Chris Riley used to say too.
So, yeah, that's all I had to say.
To be true.
So, thank you.
All right. That is. All right, thank you very much, appreciate it. Glad you were able to stay and give us some feedback.
I liked what he said about the cul-de-sacs, that you could still have cul-de-sacs but have a trail, because we have some of those where you-
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of them somewhere in the meadows of, or Lakeside.
Yeah, so you can, maybe the best of both worlds still allow the cul-de-sacs.
Well, I think one of the reasons why cul-de-sacs are not as desirable is when you think of it in terms of the investment from the adjacent property owners, how much of your property taxes are funding your street? If you live on a cul-de-sac, that means only the handful of people who live there are paying for that road and that maintenance. Whereas if it's a through street, that's a street that benefits a lot more people.
Or benefiting, you said paying, benefiting.
Yeah, either way. But if you're on a cul-de-sac with only seven homes, those seven homes are not going to cover the maintenance cost of that road.
Isn't it the same pavement amount? I mean, like, a little bit more, but-
Because it's only utilized by the people on that street, you can't spread that cost out amongst the entire city. You can't. But you can't attribute that to the entire city, whereas you can, a through street, you can attribute that cost to a much wider audience.
Well, but does the road get as much wear and tear? Do you have to, do you have to go onto the cul-de-sac to do the repair every six years? Can you wait till, and do it every 10?
Roads tend to fail from environmental issues, not necessarily load.
All right, well, moving on, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't know.
Is there anybody else wishing to make public comment? Go ahead.
Oh, no, we're here to hear you.
Yeah, introduce yourself, please.
Hi, my name is Andre Graham. I am kind of a new resident and a newer cyclist. I barely know how to ride, I barely know how to balance. I will say, I would really like the bike lanes to be on both sides, as well as the sidewalks, please. I have so much trouble crossing the road. I live just off, just down the street from here, and if the weather was just a little bit nicer, I was going to ride up here to the Justice Center. I had trouble trying to get there this morning when I thought the city council was at 7:00 a.m. There was, yeah, there was construction on one side of the sidewalk, and to cross that road, people go really fast through that road right there. So there wasn't really a good chance for me to go across in the first place. I ended up having to take my car. In terms of that, I would really like to ride my bike more. I have, you know, this is kind of tangential, but I have a senior dog. I would like to take him places without having to go in the car all the time. I would like to reduce my emissions overall. And it kind of sucks when I have to get in my car and drive through to a place that is about 10 minutes away by bike. It is really good here in Flugerville compared to where I come from. I come from Little Rock, Arkansas, where it is not walkable at all. But I would like to see improvement. I don't know, are we going to get to any potential to connect to Austin in terms of transportation tonight or with that? Okay, I would like to also potentially see better ways to get to Austin without needing a car. I love my car, I love driving, but I hate traffic, and, you know, there would, in my opinion, be a little less traffic if we had more opportunities to take something like a train or a bus or anything. It stresses me way out when I have to take I-35 or MOPAC or whatever, when all I want to do, for example, is yesterday I went to a bike co-op because I got really into bikes, and I was helping volunteer there, I was helping repair bikes, and that took me probably like 40, 50 minutes to get down there. And ideally, I would like to just be able to ride a bus there, anything. I'm sorry, I'm a little disjointed here, I didn't get to. Also, just looking over anything, I was a little concerned about crossings in general. I know a lot of the motorists here can be a little distracted at times, especially at night. I, just really finishing up, I like to ride at night sometimes. I would like there to be a little bit more visibility in terms of like lights and crosswalks and stuff, or maybe a bit of narrowing of the road, so maybe people will go a little bit slower. Anything to that extent, that's pretty much all I had to say.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would you stay up for a sec? I'd like to have a little conversation. First of all, all of us did it the first time once, and we were all nervous the first time. You did a great job. Secondly, of course, you know, the width of the roads varies in different neighborhoods. We were talking earlier about Highland Park, and that roads are much narrower in Highland Park than they are in other parts of the road. I hear you about taking your dog someplace. My dog is, my dog is always trouble and always trying to get off leash, and if I'm not real careful, you know, and it sounds like you've got similar issues with your dog. Senior dogs, sometimes they don't hear so well, yeah. Are you familiar with the fetch-a-ride program?
Yes, I am not, and I think I am for just regular fetch-a-ride, but anything that connects the cap metro, I cannot.
So, fetch-a-ride will take you to the cap metro down at-
Tech Ridge.
Tech Ridge. So that's a, that's a good connection to get you into, onto the bus system in Austin. I just wanted to make sure that you knew about that part, because a lot of people, we've done, how long have we been doing a fetch-a-ride?
Three years.
Four years? A lot of people still don't know what, no, it is. And the lighting situation, Mr. Mayor, I remember there was a big controversy about the lighting over by the HEB across the road when that first opened up. Can you remind us what the, what the status is for the, we were doing a dark skies program one time, I don't recall, we're still doing that. I don't remember the, having a problem. The, I'm sorry, I said the HEB, I meant the Walmart across the street. They wanted to have taller, brighter lights, and the city council told them no. Are we still doing that, that kind of thing? Yes, we do have, yeah, we do have height standards. So we do have, we have, we're not going to have bright lights at night in Flugerville?
We require a full cutoff, full cutoff lighting.
Okay.
That's why. It means it's entirely downcast.
We've been doing that for a long time.
All right, that's, I thought that was still a place, but I wasn't a hundred percent sure about that. So that's where we are about the-
So that means that there's not as much light.
The night light situation at night, because we want to, if people in Flugerville are to be able to see the night sky, and, you know, you live in a place with bright lights downtown, you have less of that, so it's a trade-off.
I don't think those are the kind of lights he was talking about.
No, you're talking like trail lights or section lights.
Oh, you're talking about lights on the trails?
Yes.
I totally misunderstood. I thought you were talking about lights as you were able to, you drive down the street.
Lights at the intersection.
May I give a very quick example?
Yeah, yeah.
I was, the other night, practicing riding my bike at Gilliland, and I was taking that trail down back to Walden Pond. It is dark.
Oh, yeah.
I can't see that at all. I'm so lucky I have bike lights.
You want us to put more lights on the trails at night for bicycle, that seems like something we should be able to do, something like that.
We talked about that.
I don't know what exactly, how we should approach that comprehensively. I guess Shane would be the one who would be able to tell us how we're going to do that comprehensively. Okay, that makes, thank you for clarifying that, because I got that completely wrong.
Oh, no, it's fine. I personally love the night skies here, so I would hate to see too much light pollution, but sometimes I just cannot see a thing when I'm riding at night, and that is a little bit dangerous.
Yeah. It's pretty, that's dark, dark.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Listen, I have to turn on my bike lights or else I'm going to hit a rabbit or a rat or anything. And there's a lot of little bunnies and everything on the trails.
Oh, yeah.
It scares me. My-
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, council, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm moved.
Second. Motion and second, close hearing. I need a motion to approve the ordinance on first and final reading.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for approval of the comments provided related to the cross-sections.
Wait, what? I need, I'm going to need a little more clarity before making that.
So the comments that were provided regarding the cross-sections, meaning that in fact we do buy the ride-of-way, but doesn't mean that in fact we're actually effectuate what's been on those slides regarding the-
Because while I respect, I actually like symmetry. And so, yeah.
I made the motion.
Second.
I'll second it.
Erlet. I'm not sure I understand the motion. Can you restate the motion?
I think regardless, we're going to need a new version of the plan to come back to us on the second reading.
Right.
Am I understanding that correctly?
Exactly.
So frankly, if we have another version coming back at a second reading, it has to go to a third reading, so.
Not if you amend today.
Not if I amend today.
Okay, can you explain that a little bit further?
So, the reason why I asked for the amendment regarding the cross-sections was, obviously, the question was whether or not we mandate specific symmetry regarding the cross-sections or not. Based on the feedback that I've gotten from this robust discussion, we would not like that. So with that made, they'll come back to us regarding a specific, like, scenario that reflects our comments there, and that avoids us having to go to a third reading.
Okay, so if we said no, we'd have to go to a third reading. If we say yes with the amendments, then we can do it at a second reading.
And if we say yes as is, we'd have to change it and go to a third reading.
Yeah, exactly.
So, no, we're in good-
We said yes as is, and then we change it, then we have to go to a third reading.
Right, but if we say a minute now-
You say yes with Rudy's amendment, we can do this in just two.
So that's the most efficient way.
Yeah.
Seems like it, as long as it comes back the way we expect.
Yeah, I'll come back.
Right, but we need to, we need to look at it very carefully on second reading.
I don't know, they're going to try to slide something in there.
Whether, yeah.
Hey, motion carried, thank you, council. All right, moving on to 7A, discussing, consider action to approve the ordinance on first and final reading with the caption reading, ordinance of the City of Flugerville, Texas, adopting the Second Amendment to the FY25 budget for the City of Flugerville, providing effective date period. Tracy.
Yeah, so we're here tonight to present a second budget amendment on the general fund only, I'd like to point that out. Total revenue would be increasing by $865,000, total expenditures by $905,000. This is a $41,000 variance, which we would be using fund balance for. This was for a facility maintenance HVAC carryover from 2024. Just to highlight a few of the amendment items, we're increasing insurance claim revenue. This is to cover these specific expenditures we've had in insurance claims. And we're also-
What did the lightning hit?
I'm sorry?
What did the lightning hit?
We had, at Paul's, we had, yeah.
It's good luck for seven years.
The copper theft-
Doesn't strike twice, sorry.
Has there been any progress on that? Makuba?
What?
Commander Lewis, can you tell us anything about the copper theft at 1849 Park?
Copper was stolen.
Wasn't that, wasn't that copper wire was stolen at 1849 Park?
And we have secured those boxes in a different way, so, to prevent that. And I do believe we apprehended a suspect for doing so.
We have, we have a suspect- We, we have, we have a suspect that's been taken into custody on that?
Yeah, we don't, yeah, there wasn't one apprehended. We don't follow much after that.
But I, I just, yeah, I just wanted to know that there'd been, there'd been some progress on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But we're getting insurance claim, not, uh, uh, recriminations from the, the suspect.
I don't know.
We're not gonna likely receive funding for that, so we use insurance.
Generally speaking, copper wire thieves are drugproof. Not always, but.
Wow, wow, okay. Move on, move on, move on, move on.
Digress.
We're also increasing, um, our revenue from, uh, P C D C by thirty-six thousand to cover some greenfield project costs that the city has incurred. Um, we're also looking to transfer our Brooklyn escrow funds, um, to cover Zola, Zola Park and Central Park. And, um, this slide references some reclasses, um, decreasing transfer to capital funds for one million, decreasing, um, using some of those salary savings from one department to cover, um, police overtime increases of a hundred and fifty thousand, and also leased vehicle upfitting of one million.
Could you clarify for me what the, uh, transfer to the capital fund was intended to, uh, cover?
It has, it was not intended for anything specific, it was to transfer from the general fund, um, to show the general fund at thirty-five percent. Obviously, we would, once we transferred, normally we don't do those transfers till the end of the year, just because there may be things that come up during the year. Um, it, it hasn't been earmarked for any particular project. It hasn't even been transferred at this point.
It just seems like there, there should have been some intentionality if we had planned on it ahead of time, um, and not just, you know, rolled savings at the end of the year. So I'm, I'm trying to understand what I'm missing out on.
I think she said, you, you said just that, so we meet our thr, our thirty-five percent threshold?
Well, we want to keep the general fund at thirty-five percent, so anything over that, we would, you know, earmark that or transfer that.
Cash fund capital projects. So, so we're, we're essentially not going to be able to cash, cash fund a million dollars in capital projects.
Yeah, so you
But, but we didn't have any capital projects identified for that funding, is what you're telling me.
But we anticipate, but we didn't have something
I mean, we've always, we're, we can always spend money on capital projects.
And it's best to cash fund.
There's always, there's always something to spend money on in capital.
It's best to cash fund when we can.
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Ned, were, were we understaffed on engineering again?
Um, there have been some vacancies this year.
When have we not?
I think we're getting very close to being full-staffed.
Don't we always have a shortage?
And, and then what, what is it that drove the, uh, police overtime? Were we understaffed on, on police as well?
There were some vacancies, uh, it was more about, uh, we have, we have had ten officers on F M L A for the first seven months of this, or part of the first seven months of this year. That's certainly a part of it. Um, we've had three officers on administrative leave. Um, we, we do have vacancies.
Are those all paid leaves, or are those unpaid leaves?
They're investigations.
Well, the, the F M L A is typically an unpaid leave, correct?
It, uh, some of it is paid, um, we do provide some of them more, um, parental, uh, leave, and if they do have the vacation or sick, I mean, they're still being paid if they have that, uh, leave on the books.
And I need to be clear on administrative leave, sometimes that is like an officer-involved shooting, so they're pulled off of patrol, which we're trying to maintain minimum staffing, so they may go to light, do, they're, they're working, they're just not.
Somebody might have to cover that shift, so.
Do any of those leaves then reduce our, do we have any salary savings related to those that could also?
We're not really reflecting any salary savings at this point.
It's, it's more about then other officers are making up for them being not there, so therefore
Right, that's why we have the overtime, but we don't have any commensurate, uh, savings for the folks who aren't on shift.
So is it higher than usual number of people out for whatever various reasons?
Yes.
So I'm sure that it's gonna happen with the staff that big.
Correct. There was also an additional sixteen hours of active shooter training, that was mandated training, um, that was on top of forty hours that they would normally have to do, so this was a new mandate that had to be, um, taken care of.
Is that a state mandate or a federal mandate?
Fifteen hundred hours of overtime that was incurred this year. I'm sorry?
Is that a state or federal mandate?
Um.
State, it's state. It is a, a state.
Okay, all right.
And when we created the budget, we were not aware of that, and there we are. And it's annual, um, so we'll be preparing for that in FY twenty-six.
So, can you just go back?
Yep.
Will you please, um, clarify, what is leased vehicle upfitting?
So we, we are a part of a leased vehicle program, I believe it started two or three years ago, where we're trying to, uh, flip our fleet and, and we're, um, taking advantage of an enterprise lease program, but, um, a lot of the, at least the police vehicles and a lot of the public work vehicles have to be upfitted once we receive them. This particular adjustment relates to some twenty-four and twenty-three models that were very late in getting here. I mean, we are just now getting some of those vehicles this year, and also the fiscal twenty-five, um, vehicles that were ordered.
Thank you.
We're making sure that in fiscal twenty-six, we already have those codes, we already have that.
This won't happen again.
So does every, every vehicle has to be upfitted, which I'm assuming means like
Not every vehicle, but, but quite a few of them. And the police, most certainly, that have the largest
All the police vehicles.
Yes, pretty much.
To some degree, some of them get
There's some administrative vehicles that maybe don't have very much.
They get some in public works. That have lights, streets.
Okay, I'm just wondering what is in the definition of up, upfitting? I mean, I can imagine.
Pretty much all the, all the after, um,
Aftermarket.
Yes, equipment that gets put on.
Even doing this for
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Motion approved, item seven A.
Second.
Motion and second.
I'm surprised Trista hasn't taken off her microphone for people. Don't think I
Motion carried. Item seven B, presentation regarding the findings of the twenty twenty-five community survey conducted by E T C Institute. Roger.
Yeah, good evening, mayor and council, I'm, I'm the director of communications and marketing here at city of Flugerville, as you know, and tonight we are gonna present to you our twenty twenty-five findings of our community satisfaction survey. As you know, we've contracted out E T C for multiple years, they're an industry standard as well. Um, just a reminder too, that all those results, including the full report, is already posted online at flugervilletx.gov/survey, so if you want to delve even deeper, feel free to do that too. I have Jason, uh, Marado here, um, who has conducted our surveys for many years, he's gonna conduct the presentations, and then we'll be, uh, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
I'm on up.
All right, thanks. Good evening, mayor and council, my name's Jason Marado, I'm the director of community research at E T C Institute, and we're a marketing research firm that specializes in conducting community surveys with city and county governments, and we just finished once again conducting a community survey for the city of Flugerville. So today I'm gonna walk through the key findings from the survey. Uh, the full report is very detailed and comprehensive, so today I'm gonna walk through the results at a fairly high level. I have just a little background about E T C Institute, we're a national leader in providing market research for local governments. We've been doing this type of work for over forty years, and in the last ten years alone, we conducted surveys in more than a thousand communities across the country, and that includes dozens of cities and counties throughout the state of Texas. So this is really the type of work that we specialize in. This is just an overview of what I'll go through, I'll go over the purpose and methodology of the survey, walk through the key findings, summarize our main takeaways from the survey, and I'll be happy to answer many questions as well. So there are several reasons to conduct a survey like this. One is to get an objective assessment of how satisfied residents, residents are with major city services, and to determine what residents feel are the top priorities for the community. We're also able to measure trends from your previous surveys. This is the seventh community survey, the most recent one was two years ago in twenty twenty-three, and the first one was back in twenty twelve. A lot of the questions remain the same, so you can measure trends over time, but each time we conduct the survey, we do review the questions and usually make a few changes. So I mentioned this is the seventh community survey, the survey was administered by a combination of mail and online to randomly selected households throughout the city. Our goal is to receive at least five hundred completed surveys, that's a typical sample size for a city the size of Flugerville. We ended up with five hundred and nine surveys, and the results of the five hundred and nine surveys at the ninety-five percent level of confidence has the margin of error plus or minus four point three percent. So essentially that means that if we conducted this survey the same way a hundred times, ninety-five times the results would be plus or minus four point three percent from what we're reporting. So even for a statistically valid survey like this, the results are not perfect, but the margin of error is small.
And the margin of error would not be appreciably smaller if you, if you collected a thousand surveys, would it?
That's exactly right, yeah, if we had a thousand surveys, the margin of error would be three point one percent. So it'd be, it would be significantly more costly to do that, and the margin of error would only be one percent more accurate. Um, so that's why we typically go with a sample size of about four or five hundred So here we have a map of the city, the red dots are households that completed a survey, uh, the more densely populated areas are the areas where we get the most completed surveys, and as we were administering the survey, we made sure that the demographics of survey respondents reflect the actual population of the city. So we made sure we had a good representation based on key demographic areas such as age, race, ethnicity, and gender.
Um, I noticed there is two neighborhoods out there on, on the, the far east that has no respondents.
In that very, yeah, in that very far east area? Yeah, we did mail surveys there, but we didn't get any respondents, um, well, that makes up a very small portion of the city's population, so therefore a very small portion of surveys are mailed there.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, I guess no one out there on Seal Road has any complaints.
I know, that's
I was gonna say, I think I see my house on there, but
She didn't hear what I said, I said, yeah, people, they just don't care.
And then also, yeah, just, just two from Green Ridge, and then not too much on the, the newer side of the, with the west end.
Yeah, it's interesting, it's interesting. And, and nobody has tone hill.
Yeah, and the one thing to keep in mind, these are geocodes to the block level, so for example, if someone lived at one twenty-three Main Street, it would be geoco to a hundred Main Street. So it's not the exact address, but this gives you a, a very general idea
You're hitting it to the block segment?
Yeah.
Yeah, right, exactly, yep, yeah. So here's what we learned from the survey, we found that residents have a positive perception of the city of Flugerville, most respondents rated Flugerville as an excellent or a good place to live and to raise children. We found that satisfaction with city services overall is higher in Flugerville than other communities. Flugerville rated above the U S average in thirty-five out of the fifty-five areas that we compared, and that includes twenty-two areas where your rate is significantly higher. So in other words, five percent or more above the U S average.
I was gonna ask you, cause you've been here a couple of times, and you know
Sure.
some of the questions we're gonna ask, and I liked that on your results on the website, you specifically denoted our benchmark as compared to the rest of the country and the state. Um, could you mention some of those, like satisfaction of the place to live, um, police service, um, even the crash service? I mean, I, I'm assuming you have those statistics in front of you.
Um, as far as going over some of these comparisons, you mean, or?
Yeah, cause I mean, that's something, that's what we, we, we often ask you.
Um, yeah, I, I do have a slide a little bit that'll go over that. Um, not everything that's in the report, but there's a slide that we'll go over some of those comparisons.
I have a, a question though, um, and, and may, maybe you don't have this level of detail or can't do it, cause it, versus the state, versus U S, you, there's a wide variety of communities from there. Is there any comparison to communities that are around our same size, or even communities in the central Austin area?
Right. So these comparisons are based on a national survey that we conduct with randomly selected residents all across the country, so it includes all of that, different sizes, you know, different, when they say Texas, it's all over the state. Um, so this is more broad, we could always run comparisons more specific, like you're asking, based on population. Um, as far as the regional area, like Round Rock's one of our clients, um, Hutto, Austin, Austin's, you know, very different. Um, so the more specifically we get, the more limited, you know, benchmarking data we have, but there's a lot of ways we can run these comparisons.
I mean, but we do compete with them, right? You know, in the area for residents and satisfaction and comparison
Right.
for services and amenities.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there, today we're looking more at a high level, but there certainly are all kinds of ways we can, we can break out these comparisons. And then the top overall priorities, traffic flow and congestion, quality of downtown, made sense of streets, drainage and sidewalks, and quality of water and wastewater services.
And the quality of downtown's something that's changed from the two thousand twenty-three survey.
Yeah, that was a new, these priorities are the same as last time except for that, and that was added to this question, which this is based on, so, yeah, it was a new addition to this question. So we found that residents have a positive perception of the city, this was the very first question on the survey, we asked residents to rate their perceptions of Flugerville in a number of different ways, you can see the dark blue rating's an excellent, the light blue is good, the gray is neutral, and we interpret neutral as average or meeting expectations, it's a rating of a three on a five-point scale, so it's, it's not a bad rating. And the pink are rates of below average or poor, so the one or the two on the five-point scale. So overall, the positive ratings outweigh the negative, if you look at the top of the chart, uh, most respondents rated Flugerville as an excellent or a good place to live and to raise children. On this question, we asked residents to rate major categories of city services. So here we're asking respondents to rate these areas at the big picture departmental level, and then later on in the survey, we asked about some more specific areas within some of these categories. So again, the blue, the blue are the positive responses, in this case, it's very satisfied and satisfied, the gray is neutral or average, and the pink are those who are dissatisfied or very dissatisfied. So overall, the positive ratings outweigh the negative, you look at the top of the chart, the highest rated city services are library, uh, parks and trails, police services, traction recycling services. The only areas that had more dissatisfied than satisfied respondents were quality of downtown and traffic flow, uh, which traffic flow for such a fast-growing city, it's typical for that to have higher levels of dissatisfaction. We asked respondents how safe they feel in various situations, so you can see that residents feel safe in Flugerville, uh, most residents feel safe in their neighborhood during their day, as well as after dark, most also feel safe downtown, in retail and shopping areas, on city trails and city parks, and at Lake Flugerville. So here again, we have a map of the city, and we broke the results out by census block group, so these are fairly small areas, and this tells us that residents in different parts of the city have different perceptions of the city, or rate services differently. We create a map like this for every question on the survey asked on a five-point scale, so there's well over a hundred maps in the report. This one's based on Flugerville as a place to live, and you can see the entire map is blue. So this tells us that residents in all parts of the city are satisfied with Flugerville as a place to live. A lot of times what happens is, even if the results are very positive overall, once you break it into these smaller geographic areas, you see some pockets where residents are dissatisfied, but here you can see the results are consistently high in all parts of the city.
How, how are we having a, a blue in the areas where there is no respondents?
What we do if there's no respondents is just merge it with a nearby census block group.
Well, shouldn't it just be the no response? You have it on the table.
That's another option, but we found it's better just to merge it with the census block group next to it. Um, another option is to say there's no responses, it just looks kind of odd.
Why have you found, I mean, you did this for eleven, why have you found it better to just amalgamate it with the census block next to it? Have you found in your experience, there hasn't been that differential, difference of a opinion one way or the other? And the reason why I ask that is because something else you did bring up was the fact that more often than not, once you start breaking down into areas
Right.
you see where folks are dissatisfied in other areas, so something like this is, is, So something like this is is, I don't want to put words in your mouth, is atypical to what you normally see with the city?
Yeah, it, I mean, so a lot of times, even if results are positive or overall, you'll see at least some area of residents are more dissatisfied. We're here, they're consistently positive all across the city. Now, there aren't, if we go back here. I mean, there are.
No responses in.
Yeah, I mean, there are.
And only one right now.
Really, it's only, yeah, I mean, most, most.
You know.
Persons carrying them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One person for three neighborhoods.
Most have some respondents, and that could be more than one, even though it shows one dot because we're geoco needs to the block level.
I think it'd be important to to recognize apathy amongst the census blocks. I'd like to see it reflected as no response. And unless, you know, just because we've got these disconnected city limits, I maybe the census block is bigger than than I think it is. But if we have no responses in a in a census block, I'd like to see that reflected.
Yeah, sure. I I think it's just the one that's like that, so, yeah.
Nobody at the wastewater plant is responding.
Who would want to live there?
Yeah. Yeah, and a lot of that is really just more visual, you know, rather than seeing a spot with, you know, the the no response with the gray checkered on it. That's why some people prefer merged with nearby census.
Well, but it also could indicate apathy in that neighborhood, which I think it's important to to designate as no response. But anyway, you don't have to beat it.
Oh, you made your point, man.
All right, so we also found that satisfaction with city services is higher in Flugerville than other communities. So here are some of those comparisons. Actually, the next slide is. They're just missing that Flugerville rates above the US average in thirty-five out of fifty-five areas. That includes twenty-two areas where the ratings are significantly higher. And then Flugerville also rates above the Texas average in thirty-three of fifty-five areas, and significantly higher in twenty-four of those.
So I'm just gonna ask a math question because you said the rate of error is plus or minus four point three percent. So, but five percent is significant. I don't know, I guess.
Yeah, it's greater than the margin of error. That's why we consider it a significant difference.
Okay.
If the margin of error were two percent, then I would say a three percent difference would be, it's a city of indifference.
So.
I guess I don't see a couple of percentage points as being significant. I, I, okay, that's fine.
I was about to say, so for rating the satisfaction of Flugerville as a place to live, thirty point four percent higher than the Texas average, twenty-six percent higher than the national average. Approval of the police service, thirty point one percent higher than the Texas average, twenty-one percent higher than the national average. Rating of the library, twenty-eight point seven percent higher than Texas, sixteen point one higher than national average. And strangely enough, I would not have anticipated this, our trash recycling service is twenty-seven point two percent higher than Texas, eighteen point three higher than national. I mean, it's, I'm surprised. I mean, I tell you, they must be doing something right.
Yeah, and some of those are on here. This chart shows those major categories of city services. So this is where we're asking residents to rate these areas at the big picture departmental level. I put the blue arrows by the places where Flugerville rates significantly above both the Texas and the national average. Red arrows by the places where you rate significantly below. So there's six areas that rate much higher, the library, police services, trash and recycling, animal welfare services, communication, and then customer service provided by the city. The only areas that rate lower are the quality of downtown and then traffic flow.
Did we define downtown or did they assume downtown?
We didn't define it, so it's left open for, yeah, for interpretation. So we also compared these results to your previous survey. The overall level of satisfaction is similar to the last survey. Now, having said that, here's some of the areas with the biggest changes in satisfaction, both positive and negative since two thousand twenty-three. Some of the biggest increases include parks and recreation, senior citizen programs, awareness and information available on animal shelters, the quality of parks and recreation, classes and virtual programs, the made sense of local parks, and then mowing and tree trimming along streets and public areas. The biggest decreases include the quality of utility billing, water service, and wastewater service. Now, I know there's been a rate increase over the past couple of years, which is almost very likely what's causing this.
First three I can attribute to.
Higher rates.
Yeah, but the last two mark concern.
Well, quality of utility billing may also mean more people are paying attention to to their bill and asking questions, so that could be.
We also had that software glitch.
Oh, yeah.
It showed that they had.
We had a problem for about two weeks.
There were, there were some, I mean, there was a six hundred dollar monthly error on.
That municipal court, that's interesting. That's that's weird that.
No, because I was saying in the previous slide, it showed that they had a positive take on it, but here, this is just since two thousand twenty-three, it's just gone down.
I think it's hard to predict why, because we don't really, I don't receive complaints about municipal court service.
How many people use it? I thought it was, but the thing was, it was mostly don't know or neutral.
Yeah.
So it was just.
Yeah, the municipal court, that is an area that usually there's a high percentage of respondents who select don't know, that don't have an opinion. So I would keep that in mind when you're looking at this.
Is gonna be based on the low number of respondents.
Right, right. So I would, I would definitely keep that in mind with municipal court services.
Flugerville is a place to work. Is that, so is that our own?
That's down since two thousand twenty-three.
Yes.
That seems odd because there are more places to work in Flugerville now than there were in two thousand twenty-three.
But it depends on who the survey is.
Yeah, and if you're, you're somebody new to town and you have to commute to Round Rock or Taylor or or Austin, you might, yeah. Because I guess the the net number of jobs and or people who work in Flugerville is almost static, isn't it? Doug, you've tracked that closer than anybody else.
I mean, roughly, yeah, it hadn't changed all.
So if the population goes up, the total number of jobs is the same, then dissatisfaction would go up. All right, that makes sense. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate you putting me on the the scent of that idea.
Yeah. Okay, so now we'll take a look at top priorities. I showed earlier how satisfied residents are with major categories of city services. This is the follow-up question to that, and we ask, which of these services should receive the most emphasis from city leaders over the next two years? So you can see the top priorities are traffic flow by pretty wide margin, number one. Next highest priorities are maintenance of city streets, drainage and sidewalks, quality of downtown, and then quality of water and wastewater services.
So I, I get, I'm having a hard time following this one. And by that, I mean, there are, there are a couple of things I saw on the list where we are significantly below average on Texas and the US. And that was, I think, you know, trash and debris on private property and bandit signs and sign ordinance stuff. I don't, which of these categories does that fall into? Because I couldn't figure out a way, I couldn't figure out where I would have marked on this survey, you know, for example, to say, hey, that's important to me. I saw where we rated it as, you know, poorly, a poor service, but I don't see where we rated that satisfaction. Can you help me understand which category that's in?
What are this, what are the categories?
Sign ordinance and bandit signs. Yeah, it's code enforcement largely debris on private property. But I don't see code enforcement in these categories.
Yeah.
I don't know where it would, where it would fall.
Yeah, well, there is a specific section on code enforcement. There's a section of, there's four or five items about code enforcement where we ask residents to rate how satisfied they are and which are the most important. That slide's in the report.
Did it just not even make the list? It was so low? Because I have a hard time believing as low as we were rated on that, that it didn't make the list on satisfaction.
Right. Well, it's a, it's a separate question on the survey.
I'm sorry, on important.
But I would say just from a management hat, we read it.
Oh, yeah, no, definitely, definitely.
So to be frank, regardless if they put it one, two, or three, we, we have our marching orders. Like, I, yeah, I'm not concerned.
Do we if we're, if our survey says it's not important?
It doesn't not say it's important. It's clear in those sections that it's not good. So I mean, regardless of it being ranked as a one, two, or three, we're, we're, we need to be more aggressive. In other words, I'm okay directing operations based upon a poor score, regardless of them saying it's in their top three.
But help me understand how that would show up on on this slide. Where would code enforcement be? Is it in one of these categories or are there other categories that aren't represented on this slide?
Yeah, well, it's it's not on this slide, but it's on a, this is really just one of many slides in the report.
This is city services. Is that not, is code enforcement not reflected as a city service? I I gotta believe it's it's in there somewhere. It's it's grouped with one of those things that's on there. I just want to know which one.
Yeah, I I don't think it's in any of those. I think it's a separate section of the report.
So we didn't ask them to rate the importance of code enforcement?
Pick code enforcement as an area to raise an emphasis.
So they didn't have the opportunity to rank the importance of the things that they rated for them?
Improving code enforcement.
Yeah, and not not comparison to these other items, but they rated different aspects of it separately by itself.
Right. I feel like I'm not getting a a complete picture of what I need to focus on.
So let me, let me ask you this. How did you decide what subjects were going to be able to be ranked in this for this slide? Because just like you said, code enforcement wasn't reflective, so that means that it either wasn't necessarily germane or you thought it was necessarily something that was of of vital information to utilize for the ranking purposes. How did you decide? And you did, I mean, again, we're not, we're just city council, right? So we do this for a living. But how did you, how do you decide that? How do you decide what subjects are going to be on your rankings for effect emphasis for the next two years?
A couple of different things. So most of these questions have stayed the same for years, so we can make your trends over time. And also, a lot of them are questions we ask in other cities. We can compare your results to other communities.
What question on there that you, don't you ask in other communities?
Public art programs is pretty specific for for this survey. That's not something we ask as often. Animal welfare services, sometimes they do, not, don't ask that quite as often either. So it's a combination of of kind of benchmark questions we ask in other cities, but also then customized for each individual city.
And you get that feedback from staff regarding what would you like asked specifically for ranking for our purposes that are applicable to the city that you're, that you're working with for a survey?
Right, right. Each time we look at the survey we conducted last time, but then just decide what changes we want to make to the survey.
So along those lines in the in the report where it lists out each one in the comparison, there's a category. So were there other, in code compliance, was those three items that Doug listed, was there other categories that were excluded from this ranking?
Well, there's other questions throughout the survey where we get more specific feedback on some of these categories. Like we asked about specific aspects of police services, of maintenance, of parks and recreation. And this is really kind of just broad, big picture, and then later on in the survey, we get into more specific areas.
So just for a little bit of feedback, I think code compliance, more people would come into, you know, to use that or be concerned about than than maybe the municipal court services, because I don't know if there's that, how many tickets there are, I don't know. But I think code compliance does go to the perceptions of the city and the maintenance as well, so maybe we can include it.
Yeah, and the and the only reason why, what Doug said to me tipped off my back in my head is that I've gotten numerous complaints from construction crews with trash being in the right of way in these areas. So that's something that I I hear, I hear often. And so that's what's interesting. When he said that, I was like, well, okay, where's this falling to?
Yeah, and we can certainly add it to this. And again, it is on the survey. It's just on a separate question, you know, but but we could add it to this question, sure.
It's interesting that there were a lot of complaints about bandit signs because I almost never see bandit signs in the city limits, but I see them on the outskirts all the time.
Come to my neighborhood.
They're out there and they're, it's a, it's a constant battle. It's a daily battle. They're weeds. Put one at a corner, drive by two more hours later.
Well, yeah, because then they're like, oh, someone else put it there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is something we call the important satisfaction rating. And this is a tool we use to help prioritize this list. This is the major categories of city services. And this is based on two different types of data. First, we asked residents how satisfied they are with services. Then we asked which services should receive the most emphasis from city leaders, so in other words, which are the most important. And the idea behind this is that those areas that have a combination of low levels of satisfaction but are also rated as the most important should be the highest priorities to focus on. We like to factor in both of those because just because an area has a low satisfaction rating doesn't necessarily mean that residents think it's important to focus in that area. So we're factoring in both satisfaction and importance. The top overall priorities are traffic flow, quality of downtown, and then made sense of streets, drainage and sidewalks. And then the next highest priority is water and wastewater services.
Yeah, but not fast enough.
I get the other two, but.
What?
It's something you experience every day.
I mean, I guess.
There's one bad.
Do they not get out of Flugerville and drive into these other cities, how bad they are?
You know, when you leave Flugerville and you're going to the Austin ETJ, you, it's, it's, and then you're like, wow, Flugerville looks so good.
Remember that comment, remember that person that gave us that comment that you, you know you're in Flugerville by your roads? Because they were surprised by the quality as compared to.
Yeah.
But I can see if you're, if you're, I mean.
Maybe they're thinking the ETJ is ours.
Well, and I mean, if you're driving, I mean.
So my, my question on flow of traffic and congestion management. So and, you know, to focus on that, what is that more, building more, like, what is the solution to that? Or is it like light timing or like?
We just have too many people.
Well, if they would just finish.
Too many people, two small roads.
Yeah. There's, there's a slide a little bit that gives us a little more detail on the on the maintenance section of it. But that for a fast-growing city, traffic flow and congestion is always a low satisfaction, high priority item. I mean, that's just typical for for a city that's growing.
We were significantly lower than. So everyone's low, but we were still lower.
Were we lower than Texas?
Probably lower than Texas, yeah, was lower. And keep in mind, that includes.
Austin, right?
What's that?
Higher than Austin, right?
Probably.
We don't know.
I'd have to check. Yeah, we do survey them. I don't remember offhand.
I mean, probably, I mean. One thirty is a parking lot during rush hour, so we'd probably take the brunt of that.
Well, not like that.
But even with some of the the prior flow of traffic and congestion management on streets, that's an area that we probably really won't be able to do a whole lot about.
Well, it depends on, I guess it's congestion management, like, what is that? Does that mean build more roads or does it mean manage your roads better?
Like, time your lights better.
Yeah, I mean.
We have more people, we have more cars. It's just gonna happen.
Right. And I think that most people are on the roads during rush hour, morning and afternoon, and they're seeing this and they're frustrated.
Getting in and out of my neighborhood. Why? Well, there's a lot of people.
Yeah.
And Kelly Lane's not gonna fix it.
Yeah, well, yeah, I guess.
Finishing it will will help.
Yeah, but I guess I would just, it's hard to to know what solution they're looking for and whether it's something, if it's capital improvement, that's gonna be five, ten years, or if it's something like, oh, let's look at our lighting.
Well, we have done a lot of work on the the quality of timing of lights. And that 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 has gotten noticeably better in the last decade.
And if we actually. Problems we can solve with paint.
Yeah, or if we have flying cars, because that'll help to go ahead and get things organized too as well.
Right, there you go. Yeah.
All right.
So this is, this is really just a different way of looking at the same information. This is those same categories of services. If you start on the right-hand side, those are the areas that are rated as the most important. As you move left, the level of importance gets less and less. If you start at the top, those are the areas residents are the most satisfied with. And as you move down, the level of satisfaction gets less and less. So if you look in that bottom right-hand quadrant, works as opportunities for improvement, those are the areas with that combination of lower satisfaction and high importance.
Thank you.
So those are the same top four priorities we saw on the previous slide. Traffic flow, downtown, made sense of streets, drainage and sidewalks, and then water and wastewater services.
Why did we present this in another form?
Why, in a different way?
Yeah.
Some people prefer, for some people, this is easier to read. I I like seeing the actual numbers behind it, which is what the other slide shows. But yeah, it's just, yeah, different ways of showing it.
Just wondering. The slide. It's part of the report.
We like pictures.
Yes, some some like pictures. Do the ones.
I think we've seen the same thing.
Do those much more numbered.
I think we have.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm standing because I've got a cramp in my leg, so.
So you're seeing my slide showing something different. Are you seeing the important satisfaction for maintenance, pink?
Oh, for maintenance.
This one is maintenance services.
Okay, yeah, there we go. My slide doesn't show that, but this one does. I'll look up here. So this is the important satisfaction rating. Now, this is specifically in maintenance and services. You can see the top two priorities are condition of major city streets and then street lighting. The next highest priority is neighborhood streets, which just missed falling in that pink area.
And the street lighting centers.
What does that mean?
I don't know. Because I hear, we hear mixed reviews. Some people don't like street lighting, maybe shocker, but, and then some really do. So we we get mixed reviews all around town on that.
Now, so the other thing too is, like, on some of these high, do you have a map of which areas actually have these high priorities? And if it differs over the city?
Yeah, we have a map of the satisfaction, so that, similar to the one I showed earlier. Um, so that, similar to the one I showed earlier with how residents feel about the city as a place to live, where it was all blue, brought down by census block group. There's a map like that for every one of these questions asked on a five-point scale. So then you can see if there are differences in different parts of the city.
Are all those maps in the report, or, or no?
It's, it's a separate appendix to the main report.
Because I would love to see the adequacy of street lighting by census block.
It would be interesting.
Yeah.
It'd be interesting to see that.
It, it is online currently.
People on the south side who don't like it.
Yeah, there's two reports.
All of them.
Yeah, there's one main report and separate as appendix are the maps.
Yeah, the survey maps.
There's a lot of them, yeah.
Link number three.
Yep. And then, let's see, my thing's not working here.
Trista, can you advance?
I'm so close to the end.
Are you sure?
Try now.
Right here. Did you get?
Yeah, it's still not working.
Oh, no, go. Survey maps.
There we go.
Okay, I'm not online.
Okay. Um, yeah, there we go. So then a few other findings. We asked respondents where they get information about where they get, what sources they use to get information about the city. Um, so the top sources, top sources, community impact news, that's been number one in the last few surveys. Your top sources are your website, Facebook. Facebook's on way up this list over the last several surveys, as you can imagine. Uh, fourth is social media. The fifth highest source is PF Alerts. And that was just created a couple of years ago, so that's, you know...
And the community impact is a change from last time?
Change from last time, you said?
Yeah. Or is it the same?
I think it was the same last time, yeah.
I'm always surprised our website's actually up there, as opposed to social media.
People don't...
Yeah, I mean, the Facebook and social media have been going up this list, but... Yeah, community impact's been one for a while, your website two for a while. A lot of times, the, the sixth one down, friends, which is essentially word of mouth. A lot of times that rate's higher, so it's good people are gaining information more directly from the city.
So...
He is way down there.
Your next report should have the margarita meat at twenty-three oh four.
See if, see if that's on the list.
It's like, you wanna know what's going on?
That's right.
Right, well, why add that to the survey next time?
Well, and margaritas with the mayor. Yeah, there you go. Probably get a lot more people coming. Adult beverage.
All right, so this chart shows how important residents feel it is for the city to invest in various different potential project improvements. So dark blue means residents think this one's very important, light blue means somewhat important, gray means not sure or no opinion, and the pink is not important. So there are three, uh, potential improvements that more than two-thirds of respondents rate as very important. Traffic management and traffic signal timing, new roads and road widening, and then water and wastewater for the future.
And you said gray means three out of five.
On, on this one, it's a little bit different. Here it means...
Because I see, because I see it, yeah, because I was about to say, because you say no opinion. You say no opinion on this one.
Yeah, this scale's a little different than some of those others that we saw.
This is a four-point scale, not a five-point scale.
Yeah.
Right.
I would, no, I don't do the job. Nevermind, okay.
Now, this is a follow-up to that question. Now we're asking which three of these should receive the most emphasis over the next two years? So in the previous slide, someone could say all of these are very important. Now they have to pick which three are the top priorities over the next couple of years. And you can see the top priorities are still traffic management, traffic signal timing, new roads and road widening, and then water and wastewater for the future.
Is this supposed to be this?
So just a quick recap. We saw that residents have a positive perception of the city. Uh, most respondents rated Flugerville as an excellent or good place to live and to raise children. Overall satisfaction with city services is higher in Flugerville than other communities. Uh, you're rated above the US average in thirty-five of those fifty-five areas, much higher in twenty-two areas. We looked at some of those examples. In the top overall priorities, uh, traffic flow and congestion, quality of downtown, maintenance of streets, drainage and sidewalks, and quality of water and wastewater services. All right, so any, it's everything I had. Any, uh, any comments, any questions?
Stop, you know you got them all the way through.
There's been a lot, but you never know.
Okay. Any, any other questions? If not, we'll move on.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, I would like to move the executive session items up, uh, ahead of the next item. Uh, and, um... It's, uh, yeah. Seven F, executive session item discussion regarding the gen tract adjacent to the downtown east project pursuant to section five-five-one dot zero-eight-seven of the Texas Government Code. Uh, seven G, executive session, discussion accordance with the Texas Government Code, section five-five-one dot zero-seven-two, deliberation regarding real property and section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one consultation with attorney related to purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property generally located in downtown Flugerville. We're in executive session.
Okay, we're back from executive session. No action was taken. Moving on to our last item.
Actually, yeah, hold up.
Hold on.
That AC here.
Oh, sure. I forgot to get water.
Item seven C is discuss and consider action regarding a request to Travis County related to emergency medical services in the city of Pugerville.
Mayor, Councilmember Weiss and I have gotten to a point with our just conversation with the county where they think it's appropriate for us to make a formal request for them to fund the delta between the service, service costs that were, what's the, what's the service provider we have right now?
Allegiance.
Allegiance and what would be paid for ESD number two. They, we've spoken to Commissioner Sheng, Commissioner Trabillian who are on board with this. They would just like to have a formal request. We believe it's appropriate from the council on this so they make sure that, you know, they have.
I have a question.
People on board with it. Yes. Yes, ma'am.
How, how do we get to the point of discussing a delta and we haven't necessarily discussed changing service providers?
That's part of the conversation.
We would, so, so from my perspective, we would want to make sure that the funding is arranged. We would, we've discussed high level deal points where our agreement wouldn't necessarily change. The county would have an agreement directly with ESD number two to cover the delta. And, you know, I want all of that in writing before, you know, we make any, any moves. And this is a request. They want something from us in writing.
You, you, you know how I, I feel, you know that I want this. However, I feel like I, I, I'm concerned about the way we're doing this right now. I, I, it doesn't feel very comfortable for me.
What would make you feel comfortable?
I feel like we're having a discussion about the difference, but we, there's all these other steps and conversations that we haven't had first. So it doesn't feel real good for me.
Yeah.
It may be because I'm not in the loop of some other things that I maybe didn't know, but I, I just, this just feels interesting.
So.
But I do want the desired outcome that you all want. Let me make that perfectly clear, but I'm just not sure about these steps.
So one of the things that you conveyed very clearly whenever we created subcommittee was, y'all go fix this. Your exact words were, y'all go fix this.
Transparently.
Yeah. Go fix this. And one, and so for our purposes, the decision has been made whether or not to go ahead and exchange, but we want to make sure we have all the deal points up in place. So then when we have that discussion, we can actually go ahead and go.
So like questions like, if we're discussing the delta, then what exactly is the price?
That's.
So, so that's why I'm saying that I feel like this is a little backwards.
So the, the concern, the, the position that we've taken with the county is that the price is what we're currently paying.
So, so you, do you understand though, I'm having to ask you that for you to tell me that. And so that's why it doesn't feel completely smooth for me.
And you're asking that for us to tell you that? And that's why we're having this discussion right now?
Mm. I'm gonna be quiet.
Well, um, so I, my, my outcome, desired outcome would be to ask the county to pay for all of our emergencies.
We've done that. And that's, that's weird.
Yeah, that's, that got us left out.
Yeah, that's not.
I mean, they used to fund it all. So.
So the county is currently going through a process. They, they've put an RFP out to do an evaluation on countywide services. So we expect within the next two, two or three years that they will have a countywide model that addresses those concerns.
Or, or, yeah, I like the way you put it. So our, our, our really, our relationship with that.
It creates equity.
Exactly. Wouldn't be similar from this.
So, I mean, this might help, it might not. Whatever y'all negotiate, you're still going to come back to.
Oh, yeah, but I can't sign anything.
Right? Numbers and everything else, right?
That is quite literally why we're here right now.
So you're gonna bring all the numbers and everything else and the negotiations and we're gonna have a long discussion about that?
We're, we're just lining up deal points to enable the, to enable the discussion.
This is just allowing y'all to have that conversation. Yeah.
Well, this is, this is allowing the county to provide the pre-authorization, so to speak.
So my other question is, is there, um, is there a level of data or dissatisfaction with our current service? I mean, because the reports that I, is there data or, or some sort of level of demonstrated dissatisfaction with our current provider? Because all of the, all of the reports I'm seeing is that we're, we're getting the service that's promised to us in the contract.
So let Caesar and, and Caesar?
Oh, man. Do you want me to go up?
Well, I, I'd like, like.
They're probably watching right now.
Data, data as far as like, I mean, we have a service level agreement. The reports I'm seeing is that that service level agreement is being met.
Well, if that service level agreement is just to deliver a injured party to a hospital, then that's probably what they're doing. I have serious doubts about, and have had and continue to have serious doubts about the training of the paramedics and the EMS staff. I have doubts about the equipment that they maintain. I have doubts because I have information, not data. But I, I'm still concerned about the safety of our citizens in Pugerville. And I think the ESD two ambulance service is much better equipped to provide a higher quality of service.
I, I was gonna say, I, again, I will say this, but I'll, I'll be more blunt. I have firsthand witnessed a concern regarding what I've seen regarding what's happening between the utilization of our current provider and ESD number two. And if not for ESD number two having the specific equipments, direction to go ahead and help on these things, it's disconcerting. And so.
So that, but my question is, like, where, where are these in the reports that, that we're supposed to be getting? And like, where is the report of?
Do you, do you get reports?
Well, I'm reading the reports that we get monthly. We're.
Oh, you get monthly reports?
In the weekly.
Yeah.
In the weekly. It's in the weekly.
So I'm, then that's where they're, and there's quarterly reports. And that's where things are reported. So.
ESD reports?
No.
No, 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 the lead's report. The lead's reports.
In our weekly?
Yes.
Oh, once a month.
Once a month.
A month, a report.
Not, not every week. In the weekly update, the monthly report comes in one of your.
Something weekly. Let me know when that happens.
Three weeks out of the month?
Yeah. Once a month in the weekly report. We, um, so I, I haven't heard staff, you know, any, anything further than that raise any issues of any, in specific incidents.
I don't think they want to.
Well, I mean.
But that's not what we're discussing.
Yeah. I mean, so, I mean, if that, that's what the reports are, they report the issues, they report the steps and the resolutions. And so I guess I, I want hard data and not anecdotal.
Well, you're not, I'm gonna be, I can't say it bluntly. You're not gonna find the hard data. You're not. It doesn't exist because it comes from the, the current service provider that we, we use, self-reporting, and they're not going to self-report negative data.
Well, I mean, that's gonna happen with every provider.
I can tell you from my perspective, being, hold on, ready. Being where I have stood from the very beginning, I have had the opportunity of multiple residents in our, our area coming forward to me to complain in a way that they won't complain to, just not throwing a shot at you, but the way they won't complain to Councilman Rogers.
But shouldn't they have complained?
Throw a shot at me.
No, 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 because they know where you stand. So I don't mean that as a negative. The proper channel to complain is to the city. That, that's the proper channel to, otherwise it's just hearsay.
And so.
There's an investigation.
I can tell you that I have been reached out to by many, many citizens and they're very, very unhappy because public safety is a problem right now. And as you saw on this report, fire wasn't a problem. We're getting great fire services. But if you saw on that report, they had something with EMS. And EMS was somewhat concerned by our citizens. I don't know if you saw that?
I didn't, but it was, yeah. It wasn't, it wasn't pointed out in the major, I think we need data and it's seriously.
I think Ms. Ryan has a point and, and, and she's making a very good point about the data. And, you know, I, you know, from my position, Melody, you know, I, you know, I acknowledge your position and promise to weigh it carefully. I mean, that's all I can say.
Well, I, you know, I think it might be useful, we have anecdotes, to at least have a collection of those anecdotes and to have a, you know, and, and to have the, the complaints brought to allegiance and have them, have an opportunity to answer those complaints.
That is not what this agenda item is.
Correct.
I want what you all want, but that is not what this agenda item is. And I just feel like there's some missing pieces that we need, because this isn't just, just a conversation for us. This is also a conversation for our residents. And so it, there's some pieces missing. You, it says discuss and consider an action. Y'all are talking about something totally different.
Exactly. You're right. And.
And I don't think that they should be mixed together like that.
Well, I think Councilman Weiss and. Well, I think Councilman Weiss and, and Councilman Mateer who have been meeting and negotiating with the county, I think are on the right path to be able to address the financial gap that we had. Because basically the difference was only $800. I mean, eight, eight thousand.
About $600,000, $700,000.
Yeah. And so whether it's, you know, one or the other, I mean, I would prefer our local public service provider, ESD two, to be servicing our citizens versus a private provider. And I think if these gentlemen are going to the county and trying to negotiate some leverage into getting there, I think that's the, the right move to make.
And that's beautiful, but come back with a full story.
Well, we need, we need to, we need authorization to issue a request to them in order to bring back a complete package.
For what amount?
Yeah.
Well, that's what they're gonna bring back.
That's, that's what we're gonna bring back.
We're gonna send the request for the.
This is just saying that they're gonna go forward and get all that information and bring it back.
So how can we approve something without?
I think we're proving that they're gonna have those negotiations, allow them to have, am I reading that correctly?
Is that what council members should be doing is negotiate?
That's quite literally.
No, I mean, but.
Why, wait, let's, wait, I wanna make.
Negotiating the contract?
Yeah, I wanna make.
No, the, the electeds are negotiating with the electeds to get things in the budget.
Exactly. Cause I was gonna say, let's level set where we were on this. Specifically go out there and see if we can go ahead and work and actually have a deal in place with that. And with that, bring back the information data points to be voted on because again, it's a subcommittee. A subcommittee cannot make a decision for the entire council. So you bring back the information and data points that's related to that and go on from there. What was the delta that was previously was $600,000. It's no more, no less is what we're asking for from the, from the, from the commissioners about that. Additionally speaking, we're paying 1.3, 1.4, what are we, what are we paying right now? Yeah, 1.3 right now. Allegiance, we expect, we're not gonna pay any more or any less to that right there. It was to fund and work for that to see it as a viable solution. Until we have that as a viable solution, we had to come back to y'all on this because we can't do that without your permission to do that because we're a subcommittee. So we had to come back here and make sure we got the additional, the, the permission to get the information and be able to make it, and be able to bring it back down.
And, and the folks at the county want a legitimate request from us so that they can consider it, you know, legitimate for working on their budget.
As opposed to just two of us just going off rogue.
And I.
I mean, a, a couple of years ago, we were told, oh yeah, the county will make it happen. And I'm like, unless it's in writing, it's not real, right? So we want to put it in writing.
I, I guess the other, other thing when I say like coming back with a full picture is when we originally approached this, we knew that every time the contract renewed, their price was going up. Y'all thought about that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's why.
That's why I say come back with the whole story.
But we can't, okay, this is where I'm confused. That's what we're going to, you're asking for the specific deal points. We can't do that until we get permission that we're allowed to even talk to them about the deal points. Does that make sense? And that's what we're saying. And then we come back with the information for the deal points on that. Literally. Otherwise, we can't, I mean, we can't just negotiate.
Hold on, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna fall off on something Doug said earlier. The, the county is, is looking to go for, to a, a singular countywide model?
No.
Studying it.
They're studying the countywide cost and provision of service.
And so what's, what's their timeline?
Hmm, couple of years.
Yeah, a couple of years.
Somebody's probably telling me to fix my face.
You wanna wait two years? I mean, well, we, we've got a contract that'll, that doesn't expire until, until after. So why are we, why are we pursuing this at all if the county's gonna provide a completely different service model before our contract expires?
Our anticipation is not the county's gonna provide a completely different service model. Our anticipation is that the, what we're discussing right here may be.
This may be their model going forward. My, my anticipation is that they will be asking for participation from all entities.
I like the way you put it, participation.
Yeah, their model's gonna come.
It's my, my anticipation.
The cost for, the cost for EMS services.
We're still gonna show our cost.
Yeah.
From a county, from the county provider?
And I think that's what changes.
From Travis County.
From Travis County.
Motion to approve item 7C?
A second.
I, I don't know what the action is. Cause it's, it's just. I need, is it a?
Rudy, do you wanna articulate?
Yeah, for us, for.
It's not complete.
I know. What, what my suggestion would be is there's a document from the city requesting for that, for the county to fund the delta between the cost of services being provided for allegiance. Serena, you're asking for.
Yeah, I don't know what the delta is.
That, that's, we can put it in those terms.
That's exact, no, yeah, we put in, we put in the specific terms.
So you say we're asking for a delta and they say, how much is that? And we say, I don't know.
It depends on what.
So, so what, one of the, one of the things I mentioned, one of the things I mentioned early on was that my expectation, and I have articulated this to our commissioners, that we engage with the ESD and the county engage with the ESD to make up that difference. So we would engage with the ESD for our current contracted amount and the county would engage, would contract with the ESD for the difference.
And, and let's, and let's be clear. That request was made and they agreed. What they, what they're looking at is actually amending their agreement with the ESD.
Cause they already have an agreement for a, for a subsidy over there. So that would be the expectation is that we would have a set fee already established. And the county would be responsible for whatever is requested by the ESD in excess of that.
And they would fund, and they would fund the delta directly to the ESD.
And y'all can write that up. I'm good.
Well, y'all would, but we, we can do, yeah, we can do it ourselves. I did this for.
And does that, does that satisfy the council?
I just don't know how to put that in a motion then. I mean.
I, I would, I would say, well, Rudy, do you wanna try it again?
I'll send my motion so that y'all can formulate a better motion. Motion to approve, written request from the council regarding the funding of the delta directly to the ESD regarding their standing contract for EMS services in the ETJ, which again will relate back to our EMS services. Cause you just need this in the, all you need this is for purposes truly for this to be in the, in the, right, yeah, in the minutes, not in, not in the, whatever it says from there, in the document itself.
And voting yes does what?
Sends a letter.
Allows us to send a letter.
Allows us to send a letter.
Just clarify.
Yeah.
Second. That way we can discuss. He made a motion, I second it, so we can discuss.
I'd be a lot more comfortable voting on this if I could see what the letter was gonna look like.
You wouldn't. Yeah, you're gonna vote, we all know you're gonna vote no.
He might not.
I mean.
Okay, I have a motion.
The cat's in the box. We haven't opened the box yet.
I'm sorry, Trey? I have a motion and a second on the floor.
We did also have a public comment request on this item.
Go ahead.
Oh.
Did we?
Oh, yeah, I have someone, Chris, do you wanna come forward?
No surprise, who's making public comment over here?
Uh, well, man, you guys are amazing. It's 11 o'clock at night. You guys are still working over here. Thank you for what you do. Wow. Like all of you, I really care deeply about the safety of my neighbors. And when it comes to public safety, regardless of what the survey said, there is nothing more important. It's the foundation of any vibrant community. And to that end, thank you to this body for moving this whole process forward. Um, we need to fix the EMS problem in our city and this is step one to make that happen. And I know Councilmember Holiday, you're like, you know, I think this is a great step one. Let's talk about talking about it. And thank you guys for working to solve this problem and for taking care of the safety of my neighbors and the people that I love. So thank you.
Thank you.
Clear as kind.
Thank you. Hey, motion and a second's on the floor. Motion carried. All right. Thank you very much. We're adjourned.